All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting scheduled for December 2nd, 2025, for Lakeville area schools. If you will all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we can do a roll call, maybe starting on my left and going around the table.
Bill Holmgren.
Carly Anderson.
Paul Carbone.
Brenda Albrecht.
Amber Cameron.
Michelle Humphrey.
Tony Reigenberger.
Ellen McDonald.
Lucas Young.
Tracy, oh Tracy rolled.
Kim Baker.
Michael Baum.
And I'm Matt Swanson. So Board, I will say, we ended up jamming more things into this night than were initially anticipated. Just with three weeks left, we had a lot of stuff to kind of put in, and our next two meetings will be busy as well. Some of these things are just, I mean, all of the things are just for discussion, but we don't necessarily have to spend a ton of time on them, depending on interest. So I guess we'll just jump right into the first thing. Combining polling locations, this is something the district brought to our attention as a recommendation. This would apply only to special elections, not to any of our general elections, and the thought process is to try to save some costs on polling locations. And then I know, Kim, if you had some additional comments or other-
If I can. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and exactly what the Chair said, but a couple of other pieces to this that I think are germane or important to understand. Board members, I sent you a read ahead on this. Obviously, there's information in the packet. It's the same information. One of the biggest challenges with elections is the heavy amount of administration associated with it. And just for historical context, in the district, the executive assistant to the superintendent is the lead on that and has been, in the time I've been in the district and before, going back to Mary Manning, and before that. And one of the challenges that we have is we have to do all of the pieces. And back about 2012 or 13-ish, the city had helped us out a lot in terms of giving us support from their election office, whether we were in a general election or a special election. And then that kind of dwindled away, probably about 2017 or 18. There was some changeover in the office there, and it's really been on us, especially for non-general elections, okay? We don't have a special staff for that. We have an individual that's in the personage of Kim Elson now, and I think the record should reflect that she's done a fabulous job of making sure that the elections have gone according to requirements. I will also say that the process for elections has matured over the years, and the scenarios of you can only go to a polling place and you have to stand in line are days of yore, and yore spelled Y-O-R-E. That's not a thing any longer. And so, in the contemporary operating environment of how elections are held today, I think that merits our consideration, and we of course want to answer your questions, but it merits our consideration to bring this back and have a conversation about consolidation, reducing the number of polling places. So, as the information shared there, when you see a polling place, you have all the judges, you have all the equipment, and then you have a lot of regulation that you have to operate under in order to carry out that election with fidelity and efficacy, which is always our goal. So I just want to set that groundwork as we talk about this and the different courses of action. And our subject matter expert is, in fact, Kim Elson, and our guest, would you introduce yourself, ma'am? Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Blue. I'm the Dakota County Elections Director. Okay, so we have the Dakota County guru, and if she had a T-shirt, it would say guru on it. So I think, you know, my goal here was to make sure that what your questions may be get answered, and they get answered promptly and with the level of depth I think you would want to make sure you have.
Yeah, Michael, just as a general opening comment, Lakeville itself doesn't bother me for condensing voting areas. You know, driving five miles should be nothing, honestly. But the thing that I do have a little bit of pause on is going down into Scott County and those southern areas where, if in fact we start eliminating places to go and vote, somebody may just, you know, particularly in a special election, because the motivation isn't president, isn't congress, isn't senate, you know, it's, the motivation's low. That being said, you know, if it's a cold and rainy November night, there may be people who don't want to drive another X amount of time to do that. So, again, I'm okay in Lakeville. I'm not necessarily okay with going down south in those wide open and spread out areas.
Michelle, have you guys done this in other districts and other areas as well?
So every school district in Dakota County combines their polling places. Lakeville is the only school district that does not. I'm not aware of any school districts in this state that don't combine for special standalone elections. It's, so yes, they all combine. Many combine into a single location. South St. Paul Schools does, the Cannonfall School District and Shakopee School District, which is larger than Lakeville, they combine into a single polling place for elections. It's very common.
As a practical question, how many people voted early this year, and was it, I mean, it was located here, so how disruptive was that to the staff as they were working using this as a polling place?
I don't find that it was disruptive to the staff because it was me, and then we hired, I mean, let's, I didn't do a lot of my other jobs for these guys, but we hired three election judges who came in to help work in that election room that aren't district office staff. We also had two district office staff that were trained for election judges to come in and help as needed. I think that worked out really well. These are the same people that also help at the city of Lakeville, and just like, this is kind of a good part-time job for them to go and help both the city. Likewise, I go help the city when they're having the election so that I can keep fresh. This is like a language that you need to keep speaking in order to stay on top of things. Michelle has answered thousands of my questions in her team to get all the nuances that change every single year down right. So it's very disruptive, but we set up in that classroom pattern so that voters could come right in, vote there, get right out, so we didn't have people wandering in the office at all. Plus, they have, it's 46 days that we had to be open for voters to come in here. Plus, we also have the option for mail-in voting. We, people can sign up to be permanent absentee voters, so on the 46 days ahead of time, we mailed out for Scott County, we handle the Scott County part, Michelle handles the Dakota County. We sent out more than 100 applications. They would send it back, we would mail back their ballot, they would send it back, we would process the ballot then. Do you know offhand how many you had for Lakeville? I feel like it was-
It was approximately 2,000, I believe.
Yeah, of the early voting, absentee voting, not just the day of, so.
The vast majority, sorry, the vast majority of those are voters who are on the permanent absentee list, so they're automatically mailed a ballot, and so that's how a lot of them find out there's an election going on, and then they vote and return their ballot.
Which is becoming more and more popular over here. And they had an option to check on their, when they were voting with us here, we could point out, you know, if you like this, or the people that would call me mostly for the ballots to be mailed to them, I could say, when you get this, you're going to see on the top right a checkbox. If you check that, next year you don't have to call me. I'll just send it to you automatically. And people were very excited about that option, so.
So I have a question. Why wouldn't we just go down to one place if we have, I mean, if other places are doing this effectively, and that would probably be a savings to us, and then also we have the district office open for such an extended period of time to do early voting?
It's a good question, but when we have brought this before to be combined even to half, it hasn't been approved. So I did not want to go right from 20 down to one. It's definitely been a conversation that we've had, and I said, I just don't know that they'll be ready to make a change. So this is why we wanted to talk about it and bring back, what else do you want to see?
Well, Carly, I would also say too, and to Director Carbone's point around, you know, how far do you have to go, and making that, maintaining some, and I think we did put all the mileages in there for you to assess that, that, what Kim said, and the fact that we want to, I guess, not make it extremely overly consolidated.
I only worry that this might be a little confusing for people to be combining in this way, like where, this is my precinct where I normally go, but like where would I go in this combined fashion, and how people are going to get that information?
So polling places change regularly for many varieties of reasons. It's, you know, it's a church that has changed leadership and they want us to move, or this, we find that this building is aging and we'd like to move out of it. We respond to a lot of requests from schools who say we'd prefer to not have voting take place in our schools. And so voters are fairly used to their election polling place changing from election to election. We don't see very often that voters are unable to locate their polling place. It is available online. We do have people who call us and find it, but every other voter in Dakota County in November was going to a polling place that was not their usual polling location, so it is pretty common.
Did you see any drops in voter turnout when you've done combinations like this before, or consolidations?
I have not seen anything that I can attribute to combining polling places.
Well, we could also consider, like, doing a southern one and a northern one if we're trying to be more accommodating to people, so at least maybe going to, I don't know. I mean, I appreciate wanting to make sure nobody has to drive a super far distance, but also appreciate that we could do this effectively if other districts are doing that as well.
I agree. I don't like the fact that there's no location in Scott County for Alco New Market.
Well, I'm- As someone who lives in one of the non-Lakeville locations, I'm, I want us to be efficient, both from a cost perspective and from a staffing perspective. If all these other, like, I feel like this is a repeat conversation, you name the topic, like, Lakeville just is not in line with our peers on many things, it feels like. And so if YZeta is doing this, and YZeta School District is this ginormous too, right, and they have one polling location, I don't see the argument why we would spend more money, spend more staff time when this is a model that our peers are using for special elections. It seems like a waste of taxpayer resources and our staff time that is valuable. Like, we don't have extra that syndrome, right? So for me, I'd push for consolidation into one, and I live in, I don't live in Lakeville, so I'm speaking from my personal experience. I think all the things that we mentioned about early voting opportunities is extensive, and so if people can't vote on that night, they have many options to vote at the time.
Geographically, are we, is YZeta as large or expansive as our school district?
I don't know, I don't know, square miles, but they have like 15 cities in their school district. I mean, it's large. I just know that because my mom taught there for a second.
Yeah, I just, my concern, as has been expressed, I mean, we're looking 6.2 miles to travel for Credit River. I know voting's already down on special elections, and this is going to make it even harder, you know, or reduce our turnout even more. But no, I agree, efficiency, I mean, if I drive by polling locations, go into my polling location, you know, so I wouldn't have a problem, like, in Lakeville, you know, because I'd still only probably go one mile. But yeah, some of those outer areas. I guess the point of putting this on here, because we're not voting on it tonight, was just to see if there's interest in pursuing this further, and we can discuss it and circulate different options, different ideas. So we don't have to hammer something out today, but.
I think, I think I appreciate bringing up, as a person who just went through this, I think just throwing out some numbers helps put things into perspective. In presidential years, about 45,000 people voted in Lakeville. In special election this last time, the number was largely consistent with on the last special election, which roughly about 11,000, 12,000 people, about 2,000 people voted early, so you're looking at about 10,000 people voting on election day. That's a lot of people on one plot, one spot. You would have to manage that. We don't want it to be like you're not voting. So just keeping that in mind.
I think that was a concern in the past, right? Like, if somebody drove up to a polling station, there was a line, they'd just keep driving, right? And I think that was a concern with passing some levies in the past, so I just want to keep that in mind. I do know, just as we did receive some emails about taking them out of the schools, which I wouldn't mind doing that on a special election so they're not disrupting the day, but yeah, no, it's a good consideration. If you've got 10,000 people trying to hit one or two, or whatever number it is in one day, could be an issue.
So one of the combinations I'd like to talk about, especially while Michelle is here, is a change in the equipment that Dakota County is, and we're very glad about it. It's exciting to see the new equipment that they're getting, but Scott County is not matching that change at the same time. So there's a reason that we presented the combination that was called the super combined, where our Scott County voters do travel into Dakota County. So that would take, that option takes away the possibility of having us go down to New Market or Alco New Market for the voters if we do this, and the reason-
It puts them at Trinity, is that right?
It puts them at Trinity, which is, depending on where you're driving from, also right on the border for Credit River, New Market, and Alco New Market. I, a lot of my election judges that come from that area drive up this area for work anyhow. I just don't think that's, I also think when you live out in those outskirts, you're probably used to driving. For the election day itself, the difference will be Scott County doesn't have an elections department like Dakota County does. Scott County turns over all of the absentee ballots. All of the work of the elections comes to us to do, where Dakota County does the absentee processing for us. They also do all of the equipment programming, the election equipment. So from our ballots to our tabulator, SIM cards, to the poll pads that have all the information, that work has not been on my radar at all because it's so seamlessly done by Dakota County. They can't do it anymore because Scott County has entirely different equipment, and so Scott County has says, that's what you will do, Kim. You will work with Dominion or whoever the programmers are. You will find a vendor who will program and print your ballots. You will find whoever can do the poll pads. It's a lot of, not that we can't do it, we'll be able to do it, but it's just a whole nother level of elections responsibility and learning because of the change in the equipment. And the equipment that they're getting, which we went to learn about and see the different options that they had, it is very exciting for me and for other election judges to see how much easier it's going to be. And so that option of moving everybody into Dakota County lets Michelle and her team handle all of it for us, and I don't have to work with Scott County. We don't have to drive out. We don't have to borrow their equipment. It's a whole nother level of extra on our grounds crew and on me working with Scott County that I would love to, if possible, move on to Michelle's place. So is there more that I didn't miss about the-
It's an interesting dynamic now with 87 counties in Minnesota and only five use Dominion, and two of them are Dakota and Scott. As Kim mentioned, Dakota County is replacing our aging voting equipment. We had been in this really fortunate circumstance where Scott County used to use all the same stuff as we did, and so we could, we were able to program all of their equipment, read it on all of our, on all of our software and an election management system, program the ballots, do all that stuff because we have this same equipment. We will not have that anymore moving forward. The only way the state allows us to do that for any district that crosses into another county is if they, is if they're really truly indistinguishable. Me, and this is what a lot of other school districts do, they'll combine them all. So Hastings has one precinct that includes voters from Dakota, Washington, and Goodhue County. And at that point, they're all considered one single precinct, and then we have the ability to serve all of the voters there because it is one single precinct. They are no longer distinguishable as a separate precinct voter. For the purposes of a school district standalone election, they would be all considered in one, all in one precinct. So that is the only way that we have the ability, is if those are combined into Dakota County precincts, then with the statewide voter registration system, we have the ability to combine them with Dakota County voters with our equipment. We're able to combine them and do everything together. So that is an option for you, but that would be the only way that we could, because other than that, the Scott County equipment is, it's a different system, and they just, they don't have the ability to serve that. So they ask school districts to work directly with their, with the vendors.
This is why you see extra costs too, because now we'll have to pay for all of that where it was part of our agreement with them before.
So Michelle, will they, will Scott County at some point in time get an updated system? Question number two is, if they don't, is what they're using still sufficient to count votes? And question number three is, if either one of those things don't work, can we get Kim more help? Because what we don't want to do, you know, based upon what I originally said, is we don't want to repeat people in rural areas from going to vote. And that, and again, up here, I don't care. Honestly, I think we can get efficient. I think we can do all the things that we're talking about, and we don't lose a stroke, but I still am worried about Scott County. So question one, two, and three.
So Scott County has told me that their timeline is not to be, consider equipment replacement for another five years. So they're quite a ways away from that, but yes, absolutely. Their tabulators are- are, are functional, they're all still certified, everything, all of the equipment that you used in November, that you would use in special elections moving forward, there's no concern with it not working, not being maintained, that, that is all maintained annually through preventive maintenance with a contractor, so I, so, so please don't, don't, yeah, don't worry, that's not a concern. But, but yeah, I, I just, in the superintendent, I made a comment about, it, it is a standard structure. My understanding is every school district in the state is structured that way, so the executive assistant to the superintendent is the primary lead on elections, and, and, and that's a, that's a great discussion for you all. It is a tremendous amount of work, that is why most school districts have, have transitioned to even-year elections, because it is, it is a daunting task, absolutely.
So you mentioned that Hastings has one polling location for their whole district, and it's in Dakota County?
So they actually have combined, they have twenty-seven separate precincts, but they have combined down to five, but, but yes, one of those five does serve voters from Dakota, Good Hugh, and Washington.
So there's no additional ones in Good Hugh and Washington?
Correct, yes.
To avoid the extra costs that would be required.
Exactly, and they're, those other counties use different equipment from us, so they, yeah, so that would be the same concern. So their voters, they always come into our county, and they, they have for several years now.
And that seems to be working fine, like, from what you've heard from Hastings schools?
I have not.
I mean, they keep doing that, so it must be working.
I haven't heard any concerns about it, yeah, we, it's, it's worked for, for as long as I've been at Dakota County, yeah.
It is interesting to get the perspective that we're the only one, did you say the only district in the state, school district, that hasn't, doesn't combine?
That, I'm not aware of any others that don't combine their polling places.
And we couldn't say what Scott County will choose. They listened to four different vendors, everybody got to vote on it, we learned the pros and the cons, so I can't say, we just put up with this for five more years, and then it'll be the same, and we can go back to the way it was, so, we don't know.
That's a great point. I, um... The only other thing I'll frame is, obviously, we're not making a decision on this matter tonight, but we do have, I think it's by December thirty-first.
Yeah, we do need to make a decision in December.
A decision in order to set the conditions for any future elections, and then, looking at our schedule, that really puts us at the ninth or the sixteenth.
One more point. I was just going to say, one more point about the Scott County, we purposely did keep those three together to move to the Trinity location, so that when we are advertising, we, we can say, "All Scott County voters will go to Trinity," instead of, "If you were spo, if you were voting in Credit River, you would go here, if you were here." You'll get a postcard of exactly where they're going to vote, and our comms team is already talking about, you know, there's one website you can go to, so teaching people how to answer that question and confirm for them. I got a lot of phone calls from people, "Where do I vote?" You know, "We'll be ready for all of that." I'm not worried about the person not knowing where to vote. Plus, we sent signs to the places that were different, so that on the door, they see, "Voting is at Lakeville South this year," you know, so people are going to be taken care of. The level of service, I'm not worried about that. It's a huge change for this first year, and then I think they get it, you just double-check every time. I used to vote at Hosanna, then I started voting at the Latter Day Saints. Now I don't trust that they didn't change it, and I'm not aware of it, so I go onto MNvotes.org and just double-check before. Plus, they can vote early at the Western Service Center, at, that's Apple Valley, and in Hastings, if people are out and about and they want to vote, so. I just am thinking, more and more people are going to be doing the early voting, and especially if they hear they have to go somewhere new, then they're just going to come in and take care of it at the one place we talked about for forty-six days to come here, so.
So this, so one, thank you, Kim, for all of your work.
You're welcome.
Michelle, thank you for being here.
Yes.
It, I mean, I think maybe there's some difference of opinion of how many we should have, but this would be a reasonable place to start and see what happens with the data. So if there are questions about, "Does this impact turnout?", we could try around and see what happens.
Yep.
Good, thank you for the questions.
If we consolidated to one, how much money would that save our district? And we might not have that number tonight, but I'm just curious, like, I'm cognizant of the cost, and then I appreciate what you said, like, districts are moving to not off-year, what's the opposite of not off?
Yeah.
Even-year.
Even-year, and we are, even-year, that's something we, as a school district, need to start thinking about, is not running our own elections all the time.
We have even-year.
Yeah, we do have even-year, so, like, when it's next year's election, the city will do that for us, but when we have a levy or a question that comes up, and we can't, an appointment, that kind of stuff.
Like, how can we match votes?
And it will be less expensive, but not, we'll still have to, like, double or triple the amount of election judges at the, if it went down to one.
Right.
We would want to staff it so that there is a constant circle of people, we'd be very mindful to handle a crowd, but the, the facilities guys who go out for two days to collect the equipment that we have to collect from the places to bring it to the polling locations, set it up, you know, to come back two days later to pick up all that stuff, to not drive out to twenty locations is going to be a huge savings. My time in going to test twenty machines is very time-consuming, taking the city's poll pads times three, programming all of those, just having less equipment will be a savings, but it's not, that's not the only factor, you know, that changes to get much less with one or two, but we could definitely make other scenarios to say, one in the south, one in the north. I still can separate out Scott County, but I just, we also don't know the price of that for sure. Scott County and Dakota County said somewhere between five and ten thousand, you know, it depends, I talked to a couple other school districts, and they're like, "Yep, you don't really know until you're in the midst of it," but they were fans, so. Anything else?
All right. I think if people have different scenarios, they want to throw in this week via email, and keep the conversation going.
Yeah.
Bring it back if there seems like there's interest.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So our very first teaching and learning QBR?
I feel like we need a drum roll or something, it's so very exciting.
We, I can't remember if we emailed this out, but we tried to time out, Emily and I were talking about this, you know, "How much time do you need after the end of a quarter to get results from the classrooms and stuff like that, and put it into the system for a report to the board?" And it's, it's roughly a month after the quarter, so this is really first quarter, although I don't know that we're necessarily looking at classroom data yet, and so maybe that's more so for the future sequencing, but, yeah. My, my computer, of course, needed to update, and so it restarted on itself, so I don't have it in front of me, but I don't know.
Yeah, if I can just add one thing to that, Matt, if that's okay? Part of our conversation around timing was, first of all, this is the first one, so we haven't really gotten into a predictable cycle yet, but just to sort of reiterate what Matt said, you know, we talked about, first we talked about, like, like actual fiscal quarters, which is like, you know, July, starts in July, that's technically the start of our year, we talked about calendar year, we talked about, and so I think where we landed, which is flexible, of course, as we continue through this process, was to look at, when, when do we have data that's accessible? Because obviously, everything that's on the QBR isn't accessible multiple times a year. And then, because the data has to be entered by somebody, usually the teacher, or somebody in our teaching and learning, or MTSS, Integrated Continuous Improvement, and then that data has to be processed to then be added to the QBR. So, so we thought that a month was after our sort of first stopping point, for lack of a better term, would be a good place to start. So, I'll just hand over to our fabulous TNL team over there.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for inviting us in to talk about our first QBR. I am here today with Sandy Giorgi, who is our fabulous Director of Teaching and Learning for pre-K through twelve, and Nicole Adams, who is our fabulous Director of Integrated Continuous Improvement. They are here to support in any questions or the conversation that, that we're going to have around the academic achievement QBR. I would like to also thank, they were very instrumental in putting this booklet together. Our wonderful communications team, Grace Olson, helped us with this template, and hopefully this is appealing to you, and we can use this template to move forward with our other QBRs. Also, our data team, Cheryl Gangler, Douglas Nino, and Garrett Newtak are just wonderful in pulling the data for us. So let me outline the document that you have in front of you, and you had a little bit of opportunity to take a look at. At the beginning of the document, we have our baseline spring data, and so you'll see all of the areas under student achievement that align to the executive dashboard, that I know Superintendent Baumann also shared with you. So all of those are aligned, and then at the bottom, there are two areas that we are sharing for a quarterly review, and as, as Dr. McDonald said, those are areas that we have new data for since the spring data that we shared earlier. The way this booklet was organized is that for each data point, we have a purpose, and then the results, and a little bit of a narrative analysis around each one of the results, and then action steps. What are we doing as a district to address that data that, that you see, whether it's needs to increase, or it's spot-on? What are we doing as a district to best address that data? So with that, we are here to stand for questions. Or sit for questions.
Tracy, when I was looking through the metrics, there were a couple of things that, there were a lot of things in there that stood out, but there, there were two things that really caught my eye. One is, on, on FastBridge, it looked like reading went from fifty-one to seventy-four from fall of twenty-four to fall of twenty-five, and it looked like math went from fifty-seven to seventy-six from fall of twenty-four to twenty-five, if I'm reading that correctly.
So there were two separate areas there, when you're looking at the s-
That's a great thing.
Well, when you're looking at the spring data, there are two areas there, one is proficiency and one is growth. And what you're referring to, that was in the fifty percentile, that is the growth numbers, and when you see the updated quarterly information, that's showing proficiency. We can't show growth at this time, because growth goes from fall to spring, and we are just at fall. So we'll come back around with growth, and we'll be able to compare those growth numbers once we take that test in the spring.
Okay.
And we also look at growth from fall to fall, which is another indicator that we look at, because many times, growth from fall to spring, we have a little bit of test fatigue with our students, so a more accurate look would be from fall to fall. And we have, we're watching both of those indicators.
Okay, and thank you for confiding in that. And the second thing that caught my eye was the failing one or more classes, and, and I, I know you're probably not enthralled with these numbers either, but when I, when I looked at the kids in middle school, six and a half percent of them are failing one or more classes, and then in high school, just a hair over eighteen percent. And it would make sense that if you're struggling in middle school, because education is to some degree foundational, you're going to struggle even more in, in high school. What subjects are people crashing and burning in? What are we do, and, and maybe this is discussion for another night, but what are we doing to undergird that and to make sure that we can turn those numbers around? Because those, those numbers are not, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but those aren't good numbers.
So, first of all, to address the percentages that you see, these are in-progress grades. We haven't had the end of a semester yet for our high school students, so we're just seeing it in progress, how many students are failing. As for the middle school, that's also in progress. Some of the classes in middle school are year-long classes, and so that, that percentage will constantly be in progress. We see a little bit higher numbers at our middle school from last spring, because we did remove the least harmful F. And that was where students did not get a zero, they were given a fifty percent in place of that zero, and so we see the, the failure rates a little bit higher, because now they're getting a zero, zero points out of a hundred, rather than getting fifty, and so that failure rate is a little bit higher. The courses that we are seeing in middle school, it was ELA and math, and at the high school, the highs were ELA and social studies.
Social studies.
Yes, yep. We do have, there are action steps that we are taking to support our students. One of the big action steps is that our administrators use something called an early warning system, and it's a, one of our data dashboards for administrators that will triangulate student grades, attendance, and behavior to see who's at risk of failing classes. And so they'll look at that on a regular basis, and then they will reach out to those students. At the secondary school, we have our APs and our counselors who are supporting our, our kids, so they'll reach out to them after looking through that AWS, EWS, Early Warning System, AWS is technology, sorry. Wrong hat, wrong hat, wrong hat. We also have some things in place at the high school, like our, our BAR program, which is Building Assets and Reducing Risks program, and that's at our ninth grade. And so those teachers are meeting with our students on a regular basis to be able to support them in helping them with their grades, making sure they're turning in homework and they're understanding assignments. We have some other support structures, like win time, which is what I need time, and so in, during a win time, teachers are able to grab students who are failing class, and they're able to reteach content that they might need to, or give kids an opportunity to ask them questions during the what I need time, and that happens at both our middle schools and our high schools. Do you want, do you, either one of you want to add anything more?
The other piece that we just recently put in place is notification to families and students via parent square, and so we have a protocol in place, both at the middle school and the high school, so families are notified in just in time to be able to support and in partnership with the schools.
Okay.
So one of the questions that I had when I was reading through the document actually has to do with the least harmful F, which is on page thirteen. I wasn't aware that the district discontinued this, and I guess I have lots of questions as to why, because when I think about elementary and middle school in particular, those grades don't count towards graduation, because students are still in the process of learning the concepts and skills that we need them to do, so that when they get to high school, they can apply those skills and go up. The reason that I bring this up is because one of the things that I think about is if you have a middle school student that's getting a zero, it's going to be almost impossible for that student to make up that grade, to actually pass the class. And we've made this change within a year, because I don't remember this last year, you can correct me on the date, that's fine, but then I wonder what supports through MTSS, how, do we have in place to make sure that we're getting students before they get to a zero? Because like I said, if they get to the zero, then the year is, they're, they're never going to dig themselves out of that hole, and I look at like a middle school student and what they're trying to learn during those times. Number one, that's like the most awkward time of your life. Number two, those are the years that they're trying to build those skills of independence and figure out how to go in between classes, how to plan, how to study, how to write down homework, and those are the skills that we're trying to teach at that level. So I'm trying to understand what would be the benefit of removing that from an educator's standpoint. I mean, I get it for the high school, like, yep, because those grades count towards graduation. For middle school, I'm struggling, because it would be more, it, to me, in my mind, it would be similar to doing the same thing to an elementary school student, who again, doesn't have the skill yet to do those things independently.
Quite honestly, we were not in this position when that decision was made. Quite honestly, we were not in this position when that decision was made.
I'll answer that. So the, trying to align pre-K-12 curriculum and align a standard across the system and get some continuity there, you know, we have, we're having a conversation also around weighted grades, right?
Right.
Yep. And so it's, what is, what is the standard and what is the level set for our students across the system? You know, challenging all of our kids through the system on a standard is what we're trying to drive to. So I think that that, that's part and parcel to some of the challenges that we have in our system, is that there's so much variation in it that we struggle without the resources to operate in these very, in these varied methodologies, so.
Well, and I would argue that that's why the systems are into different levels, because elementary is vastly different than middle school, is vastly different than high school, is vastly different than early childhood. And kids are on a specific developmental track for what they can and can't do at those times, based on what we're also teaching them. So it, to me, in a sense, I feel like we're setting our kids up to fail because that's the time that they're learning those specific set of skills, and we're not giving them the opportunity or the supports to be able to dig out of that hole. So like, okay, now we've, now we've put some supports in place, they're at a zero, we're going to put them into a tier-two intervention to help with reading, and then we're going to provide some additional homework support. And then they start working and they're making progress, but then they can't dig out of that zero. So then, are they going to see the point of doing it? Because number one, this grade doesn't count, and number two, I'm never going to get anything above an F now. I just, when I look at the purpose of school and middle school, it's not to earn your degree. Those grades don't count towards graduation. There's no college that looks at those grades and say, oh my gosh, you got an F in sixth grade algebra. Sorry.
Can I just say one thing on that? And I don't mean to debate least harmful F and its value, but, I mean, you could say the flip side of that is, are we preparing our kids for high school if we're not, like, putting reality on them in middle school? You know, you have elementary school to figure out how to make your way around. I have a ninth grader and I have a seventh grader right now. I mean, I fully expect her to be, my seventh grader to be able to make it to class on time and figure out her schedule and all of that. You could argue also that with the least harmful F, I think it's probably most applicable, if you just miss an assignment and you get a zero. I mean, if you're taking a test and you get a zero, you know, you should be flagged and get additional resources to help you. But if you get a 50 percent-
But see, that's exactly my point. Because we've made the change of least harmful F, but I'm wondering, what supports do we have in place? Because that's the board's job. Like, our job is to look at this data and help the district allocate funds for the supports that students need. So I'm seeing a huge change that was made, but I'm not hearing about any additional, like, tier-one, tier-two, tier-three supports for MTSS.
I'd like to speak to the MTSS piece, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Sure. So to be perfectly frank with you, at the middle level, we've done a lot, well, at all levels, we've done a lot of work in identifying our student needs, and we have the early warning system in place, we have intervention support teams in place. So we've gotten really good at the now what, we're not so good at the so what, and that's a resourcing issue. We know we need tier-two and tier-three. We are working on tier-one very explicitly right now through the continuous improvement process of PLCs, because of course, if you don't have solid tier-one instruction aligned to your benchmarks and standards in place, you're going to overrun and flood your tier-two and tier-three systems. And to be honest with you, we don't really have those tier-two and tier-three resources currently in place. Now, I'm not suggesting that our middle schools aren't doing anything and everything they can, they've gotten very creative, but it hasn't been in a systematic response. So that's part of what looking at this data is about.
Right. So then I would agree, like, I would say that if we don't have a solid tier-two intervention or tier-three, and you take away the least harmful F, then the students have no supports.
How is that supporting them, though, by giving them a 50 percent if they don't do an assignment? I feel like you're just masking the problem. And again, I don't know that we need to debate this right now. Yes, please.
I think it relates a little bit, but not wholly. What I'm looking at, with, in particular with middle school, given this discussion, I'm looking at the FastBridge results. I realize that the FastBridge numbers are comprehensive for the whole district, but let's just say there, are these, on average, about middle school rates? Like, about 75 percent of students are passing math and reading in middle school, like, generally? Do you get what I'm asking? So we have like the comprehensive district, K-12 rates. Is middle school, like, basically in line with that, or is middle school way off of our average?
It's, I'd have to pull it up.
But let's say it is.
It's close.
It's a little lower.
So when I'm looking at like the failure rate, that means we have like 5 percent of students who are failing just because they're not, they're not doing, they're at grade level, like, let's say, because we have this gap here. So it's about, for me, it's about how do we teach middle schoolers how to be middle schoolers, how to be, you know, how to prepare them for high school? So it's not about, do they know the content necessarily for some of these kids? Like, and so I'm curious, like, are we, and maybe we're not there yet, Nicole, like, with what you're saying, but I'm curious to know, like, of the students who are not at grade level for FastBridge, the 15 percent or so, are they mirroring the kids who are failing? Or are these different issues? Do we have like a, how to be a school, or how to be a middle schooler issue, and then do we have like a, I'm not at grade level issue? And are these the same pool, same groups, same kids? Are these, there's probably some overlap, of course, but-
Yeah, I'd say it's probably a yes and, and that's not data that we've disaggregated for the purpose of this particular report, but certainly an area to continue to look and develop, because you're talking about some developmental skills, social, emotional, and academic, and sometimes those two overlap, and sometimes they're not the same skill. So when we're talking MTSS, it's not just academic interventions in math and reading that we're looking for. We also are really needing those social, emotional, and executive functioning.
Right. Because I see like 5 percent more kids are failing, in theory, in middle school than are proficient. So I would argue then that these should be looked at.
Sure.
Because I don't think these tell the story of actually how many kids are failing because they don't know things.
And then you get into issues around school engagement as well, like where, you know, what is absenteeism look like? I mean, it's very, there's not a one answer.
I think too, Amber, is when children are brought to IST, the Intervention Support Team, those individuals that are leading it at the sites, as well as the teachers, they're looking at EduClima, which is our data warehouse platform, and all of that data is at their fingertips. So to what you're speaking to, they can see where they are with their FastBridge scores, with their MCA scores, juxtaposition it to their attendance, as well as their failing grades, to paint that larger picture for that student. And so that data can be pulled up per student, especially when you have students that you're concerned that have shown up in an early warning system. So that is available, and our staff do look at that at a high level, particularly when students are brought forth to an IST team.
And Nicole, do you feel like, and others on the table, to get where we need to be with tier-two and tier-three, do we have the wherewithal and resources to do this? Or do we have a gap?
We have a gap.
Okay. So we can't service these kids the way they should be with our current model and with our current budget?
Correct. And that's what I was trying to address, is that we don't have those supports built in for when they're flagged, that they need additional help. And now, it's kind of like we're holding them accountable for things, but sorry, now there's nothing to do.
And I think too, Amber, it's, when we think of resources, it's many things. It's people to support those interventions, it's professional development, so that those individuals are executing an intervention at a high level. It's the resources, are they high-quality resources for intervention? And do we have the structure? So for example, when you think about high school, without having a seven-period day, even if you had all of those other pieces, that still puts us, you know, at a disadvantage. So it's, it's all of those combinations when we're thinking of resources.
And I would also say that, I find it interesting that the ELA scores that you mentioned for middle school, because during budget cuts, we cut additional ELA time last time. Remember, we cut a section of it? So they're getting less time than they did before. I think that, did those just paint the picture of what's going on?
Do we have, I know we have graduation rates as part of this, do we have anything on attendance in terms of?
We do, that is under the student engagement part of the metrics.
Okay. And whether that's, I think that's part of this too, is how all of those things intermix, so attendance, some of their test orders, how they're performing at school.
Behavior.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I mentioned that too, like, this is helpful, appreciate this, but this is only a small part of all the metrics, right, that we want to look at? And so, and for me, I'd like to see it all at the same time, because these are so interrelated. You can't just say like, this is academics, and this is social, right? They're tied together, and I want to see how they relate.
Well, and I know I, you have to remind me, because I know I asked about this before, we used to have Dr. Barron, who did a lot of the higher-level analytics, where are we in terms of being able to, like, disaggregate the data and look closer at how things are related?
We have all of those visualizations in, on both Tableau and then for the teacher level in EduClima.
Okay. So we could start mixing this.
And then one other question, just based on the high school, like, failing more than one class, and then also kind of related to graduation rates, do you have, like, of those students, like, how many of the 12th graders are accessing, like, pathways for credit recovery to be able to graduate? Like, is there a certain percentage of students that is accessing that campus? Or do we know, like, how many of our students are, that are in trouble like that, are accessing pathways?
Can you clarify that?
They don't do credit recovery at pathways?
Are you looking for the number of students that are accessing credit recovery?
Credit recovery's at the high schools.
Is it at the high schools? Yeah, okay. But then do we have that? Like, of the students that are using that resource to, to be able to graduate?
We could get that number, we don't have that here, yes.
I appreciate the inclusion of the seven-year graduation rate, just because it's part of the, I'm forgetting the MDCC, MDCC, that, that is-
Oh, yeah.
Not MTSS, but-
Both a district collaborative.
MD, oh, district collaborative, yes, the collaborative, yes.
There was a lot of discussion in that last, I reckon it was last year or the year before, about just students taking different paths. And if you bend to the pathways, graduation, it's such a really enjoyable experience to see how students have come back in the system for a variety of reasons and come to graduation, so.
Well, and I think it's important to note that when you look at the four, five, six, and seven-year graduation rates, and you look at our shifting dynamics, our growth, and then our dynamics, our increase of EL learners, and our increase in free and reduced lunch in special ed, there are a lot of reasons, very valid reasons, why students would take more than four years to graduate. And they are by law able to remain in school up to the age of 21 in order to do that. So I think looking at just the four-year graduation rate doesn't tell you who is graduating, because it will take some kids longer. If they're a recently arrived student, it might take longer for them to acquire English language, academic English language, to graduate, and so we have a plan for that.
I do have one other, sorry, one other question about the concurrent enrollment. Those numbers look really strong, and I know some, I know we've kind of talked about the opportunities at the two different high schools, and has there been any additional discussion about advancing some of those opportunities?
Yeah, we have, Sandy and I have both met with Southwest State University and the University of Minnesota to look at what additional partnerships we could have on either end.
Do you think we'll, I mean, to that point, do you think we'll be adding additional courses next year in the upcoming program of studies? Or?
This is a good time to miss about that. We have TLAC next Monday, so we have a couple of you who represent, I believe it's Carly and Eden Paul. And the areas that we're going to be discussing, one will be college and career readiness, as well as the program of studies. We've put a pause on new courses for the 26, 27 school year, because we really want to make sure that we have our processes, our processes in place as it relates to the standards-based review, and to ensure that those courses are aligned to those academic standards, and that we have a process where teachers are suggesting or maybe proposing a course, and right now, we don't have those systems in place. So we will be bringing forward in the Friday Board Notes about our next steps with the program of studies, where we are with that. We'll be bringing it forth to the board and the consent agenda on December 16th, and then sharing more at TLAC on Monday, on the 8th.
Do the students go back and forth between the high schools for those, given the differences of opportunities, or no?
They can. We have transportation, but I'll be honest with you, we find that that doesn't happen terribly often because of the compacted schedule. A student is having to make a choice between leaving and missing class, arriving late, it's just not enough time. So it is, yes, the opportunity exists, but the reality and practicality of it means that a lot of students choose not to do that, so.
Because how many CE courses do we have right now at the two high schools?
One at North, three at South.
Yes.
Yep. You got it.
And that's like significantly fewer than surrounding districts, right?
Yes, and there are a lot of districts that, for example, Edina has been primarily AP for years and years, and they have stayed with AP, but they are also asking a lot of these questions as well. And it really just depends on the nature and the need of the district. You typically find concurrent enrollment was more popular in more rural districts at one point, but then that started to switch when the Office of Higher Education shifted the requirements for your teachers, and it became a staffing issue. So it's a very nuanced and complicated issue. We have an opportunity here to really investigate it and research it carefully and then choose it. I've been in districts that kind of went willy-nilly with it, and then all of a sudden, you have 19 courses offered through four different, four different matriculating universities, and that gets really complicated and convoluted, so.
And I would just add as a little bit of history, two decades ago, we sort of made a commitment that we were going to be an AP district. And so, because a lot of times, districts couldn't resource both, at least not to the same degree. And so we invested, it's very expensive to train teachers in AP. The resources, because you can only use certain resources that AP deems appropriate for the classes, tend to be more expensive than in a traditional class. And so over a period of time, we really extensively expanded our AP offerings in the district. And so I think we're in a space now too, where it's time to look at, like, where we are with AP and where we are with concurrent enrollment, and is it some sort of a yes-and, which is usually what it is, to meet the needs of your students? And then how do we resource and support that from a, from a budget standpoint? So, so I think there, you know, there are definitely really good things to investigate. I mean, we've seen concurrent enrollment really sort of explode over the past five or six years, districts looking for other opportunities besides AP to offer college credit. And we've seen, it's sort of rebounding a little bit, but we've seen a decrease in the number, not a significant one, in the number of universities that just, will just accept the credit now for AP, and so that is a whole nother layer. So we're, we've been watching that for a couple of years to see if it's, is this going to be a trend where universities are really going to pull back from AP? Because then the benefit to the student is not there in terms of earning the college credit. We'd see more kids doing PSEO, or more districts moving to concurrent enrollment. So, you know, all of these trends, they sort of fluctuate a little bit, and so trying to keep a pulse on that. But I would definitely say, and you two please jump in from your training and investigation, the concurrent enrollment piece has really, it seems that districts are moving more towards concurrent enrollment, and maybe a little bit away from AP.
Yeah, we have about over 1,800 students that are involved in AP coursework, so you can see exactly what Dr. McDonald said. We did move that direction. As Sandy and I are doing investigation around concurrent enrollment, we are learning more about the credentialing student, teachers need to be able to teach those classes in partnership with that university. And each university that, or college that you partner with, has a different standard for that credentialing, and so that's what we've been-
And even within the organization, the university, from course to course, there's different credentialing. So it's not even the same across the board as what we found out with our partnership with Southwest. So the same credentialing isn't required for, say, teaching a math class as it might be for a psychology class, and they have different options, so it's, it's, it's unique.
Do you notice any trends, and sorry for going down this rabbit hole, where schools maybe have a greater concurrent enrollment offering, that they have fewer students taking P S E O courses?
Yes. I, in a previous district, because it was a more rural district, we had a huge number of students that were taking P S E O classes, and so concurrent enrollment was brought in as a way to recapture those students, so. And the data was very clear that that helped students remain on campus. That being said, there wasn't a robust college credit-bearing course in general, so I think there was just a general need for credit-bearing courses, and concurrent enrollment was chosen to fill the void. It wasn't the same A P versus concurrent place that we're in now, so it really depends.
Sure.
On the district.
I just wonder how many, from a savings perspective, if we could keep kids from going P S E O, keep them in our schools, and so we're not shipping that, shipping those funds over to the different schools they're attending, so.
I would also argue that developmentally, it is probably better for kids to stay in high schools.
Yep, I would agree.
Well, and I think too, Carly, the, when you have A P and concurrent enrollment options in the, you will always have a segment of the, a small segment of the population that is ready for college, like they're, they're just going to go, they're going to do their thing, no matter what we offer, that's their path, and so, you know, obviously you want to provide that for students that are ready. But with P S E O, we don't, that's, we don't, not all students have access, because you have to get yourself there. So if you don't have transportation, or you don't have a parent that can take you, you don't have access. So the, one of the benefits of A P and concurrent is that because it's onsite, then all students have equal opportunity to be able to access college-level coursework, and so I think that's another important thing to consider as we're, you know, making some determinations about what direction we're going to go in to best support our students, so.
And generally, I mean anecdotally, you retain your leaders on campus, instead of them leaving, they stay on your campus, and that makes a big difference.
I have a question back on the packet, 25.8% proficiency in science?
They changed it this year.
It is, it is a new science M C A test based on new standards.
Okay.
And so, we are at the secondary, we are a little bit under the state average. At elementary, we are above the state average. And so, at the secondary level, we have been working with our science teachers and all of our secondary teachers across the board on our standards-based review, and making sure that they know and understand their standards. They're receiving professional development in, in the case of science, in 3D, and do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Robbie Peters, who's one of our secondary teaching and learning coordinators, is doing a phenomenal job. He is meeting with those science teachers, in fact, he had a group in here today going over the three-dimensional, how do you develop three-dimensional assessments? And when we talk about three-dimensional learning in science, it's not just about the content of science, which we call the core disciplinary ideas, it's about how do you deliver it through the practices and the cross-cutting concepts? So today, teachers were in and really evaluating, what does a good assessment look like? How does it align to those standards and to those three-dimensional learning? And to ensure that it is at the right level of rigor. When I was in, in the area today, as Robbie was leading, they were really looking at an assessment and analyzing it to see how it fits with those standards, and to look at it through an exemplar lens, and to really think about the questioning that we ask students to be very specific as it aligns to what that level of rigor is. And so those are some of the pieces that we're doing at the secondary level, is going back and maybe revisiting some holes that we have as it relates to the phases in the standards-based review practice, particularly in Phase 1, do we have a deep understanding of those key shifts and concepts of these new standards? And how do we apply that? One piece to keep in mind is that across the state, the scores were poor. They were not where even the whole state would want them to be. We anticipate that there is a dip when we do have new standards, and the science standards were to be implemented fully last spring. One of the things that you will see with our implementation of the standards is the E L A's full implementation, because we have new standards with those as well, so we'll have an M C A 4 with the E L A's, which will be assessed in the spring of 2026. So if, if that pattern follows, we would expect potentially to see a dip with those E L A's, and that has been the trend across the state. But I do think a shining place is that at the elementary level, we're 10.5 above the state average, which is, is considerable considering across the state that the scores are, are poor.
I would just like to add that our secondary teachers, in collaboration with teaching and learning, and our principals and assistant principals helping to lead that process, have been doing an outstanding job on our professional development days to come together to review their standards, put together a scope and sequence that's alike across both schools, so that, all three schools, so that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and then they're working together to work on their assessments as well, as Sandy had mentioned. It's not just limited to science, but it's across the board, all of our secondary teachers are working together in their P L Cs across district to accomplish that, and it is just remarkable to see that work happening in our district.
That's great.
The secondary science test is biology, right, if I'm remembering things right?
Correct.
What, what year of high school do we do biology? Is it ninth or 10th?
I believe it's sophomore grade.
10th grade.
10th grade. So my mom, I was talking to my mom about the science scores, because she was a 3rd year biologist. So she, she was, a challenge with the sequencing is that you test before the end of school year, of course, right? And so, in order to get all the standards in before the test, you have to accelerate kind of the pace of what you're teaching. Biology, if you're teaching in the 10th grade year.
For sure.
So I'm curious, like, how, how we're reacting to that, and that's not a new problem, but, and then, I mean, I do think it's important to recognize that, I appreciate the elementary being hired, that's great, and hopefully that will, that will continue to hold, but our science scores were 10 points lower than the state average, and I just don't feel like that, there's no reason why Lakeville should be performing at that level for, for science, and I'm aware that like our, our curriculum wasn't aligned with the state standards. That, that sentence, that we're not aligned with state standards, is incredibly problematic to me. I feel like that's a failure at like the teacher level, the department chair level, the principal level, teaching and learning, all the way to the top, right, like at all these levels, no one thought, wow, we're not teaching what the test is asking. And so, it's good to hear what's happening, and I just, I think like the pressure should be strong to get that up to snuff by this spring test, because I just don't feel like there's a good. That, that's a fixable problem, whether or not kids can perform is a different thing, like, right, there's lots of variables with that, but I was not impressed to hear that we're just not at the level that we're supposed to be as a district with, with our curriculum.
So what I think I'm hearing you say is like, you're looking for a sense of urgency.
Yeah.
And I would say that, that's all I'm seeing is urgency right now.
Yeah.
I also want to share that what we see from the M C As is a systems-level problem. It's not the teacher problem, it's the system. We didn't have the system set up for those teachers to be successful, to get the professional development that they needed to best teach our students, and so, we're fixing that system. Sandy has brought up her, the system that she had at the elementary school, and has brought that to secondary, and they are really growing and flourishing in that. Our secondary principals are so pleased that we're all on the same page, and the momentum moving forward is, it's, it's fun to see when you are there on a professional development day, and you walk into the classrooms, and you see our principals and assistant principals leading the work of our different subject areas, and the work that those teachers are, are doing, they really do have a sense of urgency.
And I would say too, like what I have seen transform this year versus previously is that I'm seeing a commitment to the P L C process, which is your main vehicle for continuous improvement at that classroom level around benchmarks, and I'm seeing that from teachers, I'm seeing that from our site leaders, and it's kind of been supercharged by Sandy and Tracy coming in and aligning the standards-based review process to that, and we're kind of really seeing traction in a way that I have not seen before.
I think another piece of the standards-based review process is resource adoption. It's in Phase 3.
Yes.
Phase 3, we are a little bit behind in adopting resources, or maybe we were looking at resources that weren't quite aligned to the standards. I don't know if you'd like to expand on that a little bit?
I think too, particularly at the secondary level, due diligence wasn't done in Phase 1 and 2 to really understand what those key shifts and concepts were before moving to a resource, and what we found is that some of the resources that were maybe being considered, or maybe even purchased, or looked at, were not necessarily aligned to those standards in a robust way. And as Tracy mentioned, that's, that's a systems piece. We really want decisions being made on best practice and evidence-based research, not necessarily opinion as to, you know, this particular resource is shiny and it's new. We really need to dig in deeply, and you need to make informed decisions. And you're not able to make informed decisions if you really don't understand deeply those standards and those shifts that are required to reach those standards. So we're trying to look at where those holes are, particularly at the secondary level, how do we fill in those gaps, and how do we move forward? And again, I want to give great kudos to the coordinators, they're doing fantastic work. In fact, one of our coordinators, who leads some of the social studies pieces, as the teachers are now going robustly through the phases, they're like, maybe we shouldn't have considered this particular resource. It isn't really aligned, and this is coming from the teachers, because now they're being supported in this work and have that professional development, and the time to really look deeply.
Tracy, I know we're going into facilities next, which is actually a discussion about a lot of money. That being said, curriculum, very important. I, I overheard a conversation one time, that if we had 18 to 20 million dollars for a curriculum, we could turn this thing around. Is, is that a fair statement, is it an erroneous statement, is, what kind of statement is that?
Well, I, I would say, as Sandy and I are going through some zero-based budgeting and looking at what we really need, we talked about seven-period day, that would really help at our secondary to be able, at our high schools, to be able to offer intervention time, to be able to offer additional coursework for our students, or additional opportunities for our students. Interventions, as, as Nicole was saying, we are lacking in Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions and time and people, resources for our, for our students, and at the elementary, we are lacking in resources as well. So 18 to 20 million should do it.
Let's, let's be careful with that, because that, that, I, I think it's a, this is a wonderful conversation, but I think we need to be a little more precise about what we're talking about, and not just say 18 to 20 million on curriculum is going to solve, it's not going to. We need to be real precise about, I owe you that, we are working on that as a, as a staff team to, to look at, what are these, what are, to Director Baker's statement, what are the supports that are really in play here to move the needle on that? So this, this is the conversation, and we are working to like put those numbers together.
Good, thank you.
Well, I guess I'm curious, what does that mean? Like putting them together for?
Well, we talked about curriculum, we talked about intervention, so how many people is that, what does that cost us?
I just mean for, when we're talking about going for a levy or a referendum, or are you talking about, in what way are you talking about that?
Well, we know that the, that the gen ed formula of the state of Minnesota is not going to provide us the, the funding that we need, so we would be talking about future levy potential, but that's a bigger conversation, first of all, what's, what is the need, so needs assessment? What does that mean in dollars, and then how do you go about pursuing that?
And, and I see, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, and we started talking about this, I think, two meetings ago. When, when you look at facilities, I wrote this down, Lucas, because I, I think it's a really good statement that you made. It's not how many students we need to fit in the school, but what kinds of learning do we want to make possible? And, and in essence, what that means to me is there's an integrated strategy, or there should be an integrated strategy between facilities, between curriculum, between 601, which, which the board is responsible for, for curriculum and instructional policy and all that. To me, those three things are, are intertwined, and, and Michael, I agree, throw an 18 or 20 million out. We were half, half joking there.
I get, it's animated about money a little bit.
But what I, my, my comment is, are we looking strategically at the three, these three pieces and looking at the amount of money to do what we're talking about here, which, which ultimately boils down to one thing, how do we get better academic outcome? I mean, blow the smoke away, that's, that's what we're all here for.
Kind of a sub-remission. Sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Nope.
One piece of four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just want to emphasize that.
Sandy and I and Nicole are working through what a long-range vision looks like for teaching and learning, because if Lucas is just planning facilities out without that long-range vision for teaching and learning, then we're just planning buildings to fit people, rather than.
Therein lies my point, exactly.
Right, and when everything that we talk about is seven-period day, when we talk about interventions, when we talk about concurrent enrollment versus P S E O, we need spaces to fit those students. And when we look at our career and college readiness, and how we're moving forward with that, what do we want Lakeville-area schools to be and look like five years from now? And so that's the foundation that we're beginning to plan. We have strategic objectives and action items that are in alignment to our strategic plan, as well as in alignment to the metrics that we have, and we're beginning to flush those pieces out. We have a small work group that's beginning to come together, a small steering committee, to look at, what do we want our high schools to be five years from now? And as we grow that work group and we begin to develop that vision, we'll branch out into bringing community members and business members onto that committee to give us some input. We will actually be working with our T LAC, or Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, to bring some ideas forth to help us with that long-range planning, but you're exactly right. We have to combine long-range planning and teaching and learning with our facility's vision, and with a lacking teaching and learning vision, it makes it difficult for Lucas to be able to do his work, so.
I think that was, I know I expressed a lot of frustration during our last meeting, and that was part of it, is I don't feel like there's this collaboration amongst the departments to figure out how to all bring that vision together, because if we go to a, for a levy for buildings, and we go for a levy later for teaching and learning, one might pass and one might not, and instead, how do we create a vision for our community where we are bringing these things together that everyone can buy into and support both of those things? How long do you think your plan, your vision is going to take to develop?
Well, we wanted it done yesterday, but no. Well, we wanted it done yesterday, but no. I a hundred percent agree. As we get rolling, I am hoping that we have something together by the end of this school year so that we can roll things out next school year.
Cool. Thank you.
I guess a question, related question, then. Have you been in communication with Lucas and his team as they're discussing the expansion plans and other options that are on the table?
Yes, yes, we've been part of the facilities meetings.
I did have a question for Bill because eighteen million came up last week. You discussed, I think our tax capacity that we have right now is only like five million on the operating side, right?
That's correct.
So, yeah, so we're kind of limited.
We can't do eighteen.
What's that?
We can't do eighteen.
Can't do eighteen. So how far can you get with five?
Give it to us and we'll let you know.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that is the challenge, right? In the resource-constrained environment, it's like, where are you going to put the money?
And the resources? And it's more than just the stuff with curriculum, you know? It's the pieces that go with evidence-based practices and professional development. And do we have staff that is able to provide some coaching and instructional models in those classrooms? Those are some pieces that we're missing in our system. And ensuring that we have time within our day to do that, particularly at the secondary level. So it's all of those things that come together that really is the synergy that we need for teaching and learning.
And I think Nicole said it too before, that knowing that we do have financial constraints and people, resource constraints, our principals are trying to be creative with how they're providing interventions, or how they're providing time to support students within those constraints. And so we're also trying to look at different ways that we can provide support for students within what we are existing framework.
I have another question, related to the EL work. It's from last spring, on page three, where we have the proficiency rate for EL students. And it says we want to evaluate the program model effectiveness. As our district continues to grow with our EL population, and knowing that we're not able to meet even our own guidelines of minutes served for kids right now, just because we have not enough teachers and too many students, I see this as an area where if we want to really move the overall numbers, we need to focus attention here and support. And I'm curious, is there any early ideas coming out of EL that we think would be better, a better way to resource, or additional resource needed to support those students? Sorry.
No. I mean, I think we are definitely taking a look at just the program model and how we are servicing our EL students and the differences between level-one, level-two, and level-threes, and looking at surrounding districts and MBE guidance for kind of what best practice is for serving each of the different levels. So I mean, I can say that, and yes, and we are working in tandem with the Teaching and Learning Department to help strike the overall system of that, as well as special education. So it is a collaboration.
For instance, we, you know, we have a lot of multi-level learners who may not even be receiving services, but that doesn't mean that they don't have tier-one instructional needs. That's an area where we need to really look at, how are we embedding some of those instructional practices in the general education classroom? And it's not only on the backs of our ALD teachers. So that is a conversation that has started between our departments and really partnering on that. And how can we also maybe bring A&amp;I funds, which are coming up for the new plan this year? How can we maybe support alongside that?
Any other questions? Good to move on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone still good? Steve Rowland? Facilities vision, twenty thirty-five?
Facilities vision, twenty-five. Okay. Do you get, sir?
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah, we didn't have a...
Yeah, so the read-ahead packet that you guys have had is kind of where we sit. I think we also shared with you the educator data so that you could review that input. I guess I'll attempt to cut to the chase here a little bit about, and it goes back to our last conversation. The biggest challenges, as Paul talked about, was how do you, how do you bring the three major factors together and then shape a long-range plan? So as I assess the situation here with regard to facilities, our most pressing situation or need is to have space for middle schools. The bigger question and the bigger, longer-range plan obviously needs to be predicated on a TNL vision. And I think that takes more time to develop. I think there's more stakeholders that have to be engaged. If we look at the timeline of where we're at, and I'll speak for the time since I've returned, October, there's a levy on the docket, literally, followed by a situation where we had an operating levy and a capital levy. And the board chose to renew the operating levy on a board vote, and we have to go and had to go to the community for our capital levy, and we're fortunate that our community supported that. Now we're faced with, we have to fit students into our middle school system, and that's imminent. That could have been predicted in twenty-two, that could have been predicted in twenty-three. So we are where we are. A renewal campaign with an articulation of an immediate bond referendum, or doing that in tandem together at the same time, I chose not to do that. What I would recommend, and where I see where we're at, is a bond levy for fitting our students into our middle schools with the follow-on conversation of, okay, what's the longer-range plan going to be? I don't know how you would do something more robust in the timeline that we're in right now. And I think we also have to look at what our levy schedule is, which I've shared, because you could very easily find our scenario being levy fatigue for our community. Now, I'm basing my statements on my assessment of my experience in this community, that we ask for what we need, and we predicate that on what our community tells us their tax tolerance is. We ran into this challenge with elementary several years ago, and the strategy we pursued at the time was additions and Highview Elementary. People can debate whether that was the right choice or not. I think it has served us well, my assessment. And I think that's where we are with middle school, as the situation has presented itself. And I think it's my obligation to confront and attempt to resolve that. And that's why I make that recommendation. It does not solve the whole problem. You know, we have to talk about a seven-period day at high school. We have to talk about how and what we need in terms of interventionist, tutors, special education, and EL support in our, we spent the day today, most of the afternoon today or this morning, talking about our EL program and our EL needs in the context of North Star and the Minnesota Department of Education, where we are with that. So I think that, again, given the situation we're in, that a bond for additions is our best option. Now, I know some people talked about another middle school, and I'm not pushing back on that whatsoever. I will say that if there's two courses of action with another middle school, and there's costs that that are pretty significant, because you're talking operating costs for staffing that potentially under one scenario, and that is you have a fourth middle school. You have to do land acquisition for that, and then you have to build the building, and that's a thirty-six-month program for sure. When you talk about staffing that, you're talking, I think, at some measure, an operating levy to support that scenario. Trying to do that in a special election in May, I think, is a bridge too far. If you did another middle school and pulled one offline as another course of action, you know, which one do you pull offline? And then what do you backfill it with? And there's different ways you could do that. You could remove the community ed lease, the building lease we have here, and realize some reduced cost with regard to that. But you would have to do tenant improvement on a middle school that you're pulling offline to fit, say, a district office, a community ed facility. Maybe you could add something else in there, an ALC potentially, or Southside. If you went with something like McGuire, you could take and put early childhood or something as well in there. Those are potentialities. And I know those are things that have been talked about. But without a longer vision, you know, does that work or doesn't that work? That scenario still is going to cost you with regard to TI and with regard to, you know, obviously building a new school. So I've run those scenarios in my mind, and I've tried to look at where we are, literally. We have another challenge as well. We have to figure out the boundary adjustments. And we have a decision that has to be made in January in order to set the conditions to do our staffing properly for the upcoming school year, the fiscal year twenty-seven budget, and that's a big deal. So I think that as much as we want to shape tomorrow, we're kind of in a scenario here where we have to deal with the practical issues that are set before us with regard to, we have students coming and we have to fit them. And as much as I know that's not the best solution, or not the best thing, situation to be, and that's the situation we are in. So that's how I see the problem. That would lend us to doing additions in the course of action that we kind of talked about there. But I also think we can preserve the opportunity to bring in more stakeholders to shape that longer vision and accomplish that as well, and do that better. And if you look at the schedule, the first opportunity that we have to go to our voters on with our current schedule is twenty thirty-three. Now, that doesn't mean, and I think Director Thompson's not here, did bring up, you know, the renewal in twenty-seven and the amount that that is, and maybe the board wants to do something different than you did with this last one, and I recognize that. But those, that schedule really is driving a lot of what our latitude is with regard to going to our taxpayers and asking them for support. And if you're doing a campaign, which, you know, falls a lot, mostly on me, to go out and talk about this, I want to be able to talk about what our need is and articulate that to our voters, and minimize the tax impact on our voters. And maybe that's myopic on my part, or a bias on my part, but that's what I've learned about being in this community, is that tax tolerance is a big deal. And we should ask for what we need, and that's what our current need is.
Do we have the results of the survey yet?
No, and I don't have that either. I'm speaking, obviously candidly, about how I've assessed the situation, and I don't have the benefit of the results yet from our community survey. But that'll confirm or deny what I'm trying to articulate here tonight. But I'm just trying to appreciate, you know, the tax issue and not overstate it, but also not understate it. And I do really want to get at what I think board members are expecting, and that is, you know, what is the bigger picture and what is the vision that drives and supports our facilities? And I really think there's more stakeholders that need to be brought into that process as we go forward here. So trying to deal with that as well. Thank you for the opportunity to say that.
So I know we haven't had a chance to really discuss a lot of this and our opinions on it. And so that was kind of the intent of this, to see where everybody's at, to continue plowing forward on this path. And at some point, we have to make a decision if we're going to do this in May. If you have questions, I have asked Michael about timing-wise, like, does it have to be in May? Can we extend it out a little bit more for discussions? And there's concern about the build schedule, and apparently we have to give MDE...
We'd go through that if you'd like.
...a six-month review period before we can actually, so if people have questions about that, he can explain it, because...
Do you want me to just kind of review that timeline for everybody?
Is that helpful?
I mean, there is a timeline, I guess, and we can provide it, maybe Friday notes, unless people want to hear it right now. But I guess I'm curious on the board to see what you guys think, where you're at on this process.
Can I just play out one scenario?
Uh-huh.
This is not going to be a popular scenario. I already know that. But it's, my kid is one of them that would be affected by this, so I fully appreciate that. In looking at the data, I don't have it up in front of me, but if I'm recalling things correctly, we could fit everyone in the middle schools as-is, and they would all be similar to Century at the moment. They'd be very full, and I fully recognize that. And it'd be like two years of like, we have too many, definitely have too many kids, but it could, if Century's work making a work right now, could there be ever a situation where we may do to hold out for a long, for a bigger plan? And I don't know if that's a good option or not, but it's something that I've been thinking about, just like, instead of just like being like, yep, we need to do additions, we just need to build and add right away, do we have the ability, I know it'd be crowded, to like take a breath and manage for two years? I know you're like thinking like, this is nuts, but...
Well, I'm not thinking you're nuts at all. I mean, I, you know, the reality, the truth too is, if, if the, if we do, let's just say we go for a bond and we're going to do additions. I realize that's not where everybody's at. It could fail.
Right. And then we'd have to do this.
And then we would be there.
Yeah.
But I, again, it's, well, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, that's a, that's not an unrealistic scenario for us.
To your point, like, I've thought about that too, because I get that the class that's coming up is big, right? But then I look at our numbers, and the enrollment is slowing enough that once this class is through... through, right? My concern is that if we do the short-term solution now, by the time that's in place, that class will be at the high school or be getting ready for the high school, and that same class is going to cause the same problem there.
Well, that's-
And I don't want to be reactionary, like, I want to be thoughtful and playful with the taxpayers' money and then with also the resources that we need. So I see what you're saying.
I don't know if I might be-
And I'm not for or against anything yet, I'm just like, thinking.
But the problem is, you also have to assume growth, too. You know, looking at the developments that are going in, and if you don't plan for that growth, you know, then we could be in a situation where every school is like High V or like High V or Century right now.
Or us with our law, then we're really screwed.
And then it's too late. And you want to talk about being reactive, then we'd be reactive, right? What do you mean by short-term fix, just expansions or?
I was thinking if we just do-
Or boundary adjustments.
...the short-term fix and just fix the middle school issue and add the expansions on right now, then we'll just be finishing that, and then that class will be getting ready for the high school, and the high schools are going to have the same issue, too. So my thought around it was, I do feel like the middle schools, obviously, there's an issue there, and we need to figure out how we're going to address that. But my thought was, could we access the land that's by south and have a career center and add on the middle schools at the same time, right? So that way, we're kind of taking care of both issues for the same class that's coming through, because that career center would pull some of the students from both high schools into that, right? And we have a very robust Chamber of Commerce that I think would support like career pathways and different things that we could do, that we wanted to do, that we don't have the space for, like, on our vision list that we have here. I see your vision, I feel it. But it would also take care of the space for Pathways Academy, because I don't feel like that's a great student space, and then we'll provide more space back into Kenwood, where they're at now. I just think, like, there's two issues there with the same class.
The fourth grade, it's a fourth grade class right now.
Yeah.
So by 2028, when these would theoretically be done-
Right.
-they'd be entering into middle school.
Right, but then it still takes three years to build, right? Or when they go to that, I see.
You'd be looking at expansion, you'd be planning for them every three years, essentially.
Right, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's part of phase two, which that is a must-solve problem for the high schools. There is going to be a capacity issue of some shape, form, or fashion that will need to be solved.
Right.
That starts essentially in the fall of 2030. And if you kind of recall back to the slides on November 11, that build, you know, design, this conversation will occur sometime in 2027, so we can go through that cycle. To, sir, your point, Michael's point, and Tracy's with the long-term vision, maybe that is where you are taking, I'll just call it a big bite out of the apple in terms of, we have a vision for ALC that we can see and clearly articulate, we have a vision for special education population for all the populations, and then we take that bigger bite of the apple in the '27 timeframe. That will, you know, in a sense, solve a lot of your problems that we kind of see now, but don't need to be solved right now. What needs to be solved right now, to Michael's point, is the middle school capacity problem. And if you look at, if you look over time and you go in the out-years and recognizing that that gets a little bit, you know, less accurate, but we continue to grow, and so there'll continue to be a need for that middle school population, for that capacity. And to your points, it may change. It may go up and it may go down. If it goes up in terms of the reaction time is, at a minimum, two years, even if you were to say, go right now, it's a two-year lead time. So by adding some capacity to our middle schools, you're going to solve, you're going to have enough space to account for that unexpected growth, either up or down in your middle schools. Taking a minimalist approach will allow you the space in terms of time and money to kind of look at that vision, the strategy for all the other things, and then take a more deliberate, you know, bite out of that apple when the time comes. In my estimation, probably in '27.
But you could do it with multiple questions.
Yeah.
See, that's the other thing I'm saying, like, do we, do we take the bigger bite of the apple now, or do we risk levy fatigue and say, we're just going to do the additions now, now we're going to do this, now we're going to do that? By doing like multiple questions and say, like, question one is just the additions on the middle school, and question two is, do we want to build the Career Pathways Center at the same time that we're doing the middle school additions? So that way, this class is taken care of for quite a while, and we don't have to come back to the taxpayers for a while. I'm just saying, like, we can be creative in not only how we frame those questions and the way that we put them on ballot, but then also in how we're planning for this specific issue.
Yeah, I would say that's, that makes a lot of sense. I want to also get back to the conversation about our middle schools and if we do nothing. So my biggest concern with, Century's able to handle this. I don't think Kenwood, the common spaces, I don't think they could handle the thousand. Maybe you could jam them into the classrooms, but the cafeteria-
We have to pay some, like, people to direct traffic.
And the gym, I think, would be highly problematic for us. You do what you have to do, and I'm not disputing that, but kind of back to your statement around, you know, you could shape two questions, and it's still, and you can even do questions that are contingent.
Right.
So, you know, if there's other things than addition, I just want to be careful about what problems are we solving and what conditions can we set for the future and bringing those things in alignment and doing that work, like, this work can't stop.
Right.
It has to keep plowing and keep going so that we fit into the levy schedule and we fit into what our community growth is, and being very iterative about looking at all those pieces, like, how many people are moving in, what's our enrollment, and just being vigilant about that and bringing that to the board consistently and constantly. But shaping, again, I think there's more stakeholders that need to be brought into that bigger vision to build that coalition of support that we need for a bigger opportunity. And I think there's, we need the time built in to do that.
Lucas and Michael, I know there's not a money tree, but I think, I think what I picked up from your conversations are, your option would rather be the three extensions, the extensions to the three middle schools versus building a brand-new school. I just want to be clear on-
Yes, I don't necessarily want him to commit to that. I want to say that.
And I'm not suggesting that you commit. I just want to get a sense of where you're thinking.
That's where I'm thinking.
Okay, that's what I thought. Lucas, who do you?
Am I allowed to answer, sir?
Go ahead. I just don't want to, you know, I'm the one throat to choke.
Yeah.
So-
I concur.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm good.
And it goes back to just making sure that we're creating maximum flexibility in the future for when those conditions present themselves, we can act on it. You know, high school problem set, all the other things that go on there, unexpected growth, those types of things.
Just so the board's clear, by the 16th of that meeting, we'll have to agree, one, yes, we're going to go forward with a bond referendum, two, this is the dollar amount based on the different items on the list that we want to pursue, correct? And then if we want to ask multiple questions or separate it, we can, but we'll, do we have to know that by the 16th?
Yes.
The multiple questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, to what you just said about the package of items that would be included, I don't know if we're going to unpack that tonight. I would, I can get behind the middle school thing, I'm not, and I get there's a political will here in grouping things to get your voter base out, to get them excited. I think the laundry list is way too long. I'd rather pare this back and do what we need and save our wants for a different time.
So that was one of my questions, because I don't know, do you guys, I sent you this list of the different estimates. What is like the needs list? If we had to pare it down, like, this is what we need?
It's the middle school expansion.
But what parts of that? Because there are many parts of the expansion that we probably don't need, all of them, right?
Well, if you need the spaces, the problem is, is the seating, the spaces, the classrooms is tied to basically your common spaces, so like your kitchens-
Yeah.
-and your special ed and all the other little things that go together. So you can't say, well, let's just build the classrooms, because then the problem we're going to have is the kitchen cafeteria line will be out the door.
Yeah, but for instance, yeah, auditorium, multipurpose band and choir room, metal shop, locker, infrastructure, I'm not exactly sure what that is. Oh, maybe that's a locker room.
Right.
And storm shelter, yeah, yeah.
And so some of that's tied to how we rearrange the space. So you're, like, for example, in McGuire, you're getting rid, you're using the metal shop to build the cafeteria, so you're just basically replacing the metal shop.
Do we need four and a half million dollars for the additional parking lot?
Yes, because it's a city requirement. So as much as I want to get away from parking lots, it's a city requirement. They will be out there counting trees and parking spots.
So that's my, I guess that's my question, on the list of each individual space within the schools as proposed, what's our needs versus our, we'd like to have this list?
There are no ones in that list.
Well, we can break that down. I can, I can give you a read ahead on that.
Are you saying there's no, these all stay so that the sites are, the terms being used is equitable? But if we didn't, if we said tennis courts can wait?
Well-
That's not a mandatory thing, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, too, because the facilities list had, like, the stadium upgrades and other things on that.
I'm not talking about that stuff. I'm just talking strictly the middle schools. Some of that stuff, like, the tennis courts may have to move because I have to put a road in there to fix the parking lot issue. So it's kind of-
Got it.
You know, one is required is the other, if you will. Now, in terms of the other items outside the middle school, so item number one, middle schools, expansion, and then all that other stuff, those were identified in the task force as needs and, you know, from the community. Are they must-dos to solve the problem?
Yeah.
But the community has identified those as needs, stadium upgrades, et cetera, that you see there, you know, numbers two through, I believe it's, it's two through seven, those are, you know, not must-dos, but that number one is, to Michael's point, we have middle school students that are running out of space come the fall of 2028, so.
Well, the other thing, not that I'm trying to plug stadiums, but thinking a little ahead, you know, one of the challenges that were, kind of came in sideways was, we're going to be doing graduations at stadiums now.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a thing.
That's undetermined?
Well, we're, as a staff, we're going to bring that forward as, yeah, it's, but that's, that's the staff action based on what I've shared with you, we're trying to figure out.
We'll kick out a man, we should.
I know that, but there wouldn't be other options.
Questions, what's other options?
I mean, so one question I have, how many students are we able to, I should quote the numbers and everything, but beyond that current fourth grade class, how many additional students are we able to get into these middle schools with the expansions? And is there a timeframe in the projections that we think we're going to run out in terms of being full, like, when you anticipate that?
If after the, after the expansions?
Yes.
No, we will not, in terms of current projections, what we see right now, we will not run out of space.
Don't need any middle school.
No, we will not need any middle school.
Could Century be bigger? Like, I know you have the three classroom, I'm assuming that's two on the lower, one in the upper. Could you just double it up and go two up, two down for the expansion?
Right now, you have a grade or an addition that adds a grade per, or a studio per grade, a team per grade, right? So you have a capacity of approximately 1,500. You could certainly add on a third level to that and have a three, right now it's a two-level addition, you could have a three-level addition for-
It's just two team rooms, essentially? Okay.
Yeah, you could have another one, and you would have a very large middle school of 18.
Start to run into some site constraints, though, because it is relatively small for a middle school site.
Sure.
So you can, you add students, you add parking requirements, especially.
To our earlier discussions, do we imagine keeping our teaming model? Like, I feel like we're basing a lot of the build decision on teaming. Is that what teaching and learning is anticipating we will continue with? Okay.
For now, yep. We'll review that, that structure as we review all the structures that we have across our district.
I mean, that, that is another possible solution if you didn't do anything, if we were in that position where this fails, because teaming takes up additional space. Like, if we weren't teaming, it would open up capacity, right?
We will have capacity issues in one year for these fourth graders, is that right? I mean-
Fall of '28.
But they're coming in fall of '27.
Correct.
No, '28.
Yeah, they will come in fall of '27.
Right.
So yes, it will, it will get a little bit tight, but we're mitigating that through some attendance area adjustments to kind of mitigate some of that, and then by fall of '28, pending your approval, we'll have the space.
I mean, there's a potential that we could, the city could blow up population-wise, and we could need an addition, another addition.
Well-
Depending how-
I mean-
Rates go and building goes.
Yes, that's always the, that's, yes, we could always, that could always be a problem, but we don't see that right now when we look at the city developments and, you know, the economy and all the factors that go into it. We just see a slower but steady growth, and, you know, to Michael's point, that's something we are going to be very tuned into as we move forward, because knowing that when we see something, it's at least a two-year lead time to build capacity in terms of facilities.
Does anyone have any comments on the other items besides increasing middle school? Are we kind of set on just focusing our attention on that?
Are we talking about, like, the list from facilities?
Yeah.
Are you talking about equity?
Somebody projected it.
Yeah, can you put that list up? Because I was trying to find it, and I can't find it.
It's in the board packet from last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate, Michael, what you're saying about the bathrooms of the high schools and opportunities.
I'm not saying that's a priority.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep everybody's mind on other elements.
I just am not, at this point, ready to invest over $11 million for a handful of football games and graduation.
Yeah.
Given all of the other needs of our district.
Yeah, for sure.
Like, if we had, of course, it'd be great to have bathrooms, I'm not going to, but I think there's many schools that don't have bathrooms at their high schools, and I think we could have the issue.
It is, I mean, interesting, you talk about equity items, like, you don't know what you don't have until you go somewhere else, right? Like, our kids will be at Kenwood, or, I've got two that are going through Century, and the other two younger ones will go through Kenwood with the boundary changes, but they won't know or care, probably.
Yeah, Matt, to answer your question about equity, I thought I saw it's $53 million in the budget, if I'm looking at the right slide, total. And I have the same concern. I'd like to know from A to Z what's priority and what's not. Now, Lucas, I think you just said everything's priority, but I still like to get a sense of that.
Okay.
So there's seven items on the list, do you want me to read them?
I think we're talking about two different lists.
We're talking about, we're talking about two different lists. When, when we talk about equity, we just, in terms of just the middle schools, it's making sure that the spaces in each of the middle schools are equitable or equal to the greatest extent possible, so that one student at McGuire has a similar experience, facilities, spaces at another middle school. And so that's kind of how we, we approach that, to make sure we raise the standard of our middle schools so that they are equal across that, because that is a big concern. I'm just saying it's a big concern of our teachers and our, uh, community, that we polled and brought into the group that, hey, we have a similar, you know, to the greatest extent possible. Some of those equity items are like, like, check, the cafeteria, we gotta have, you know, we call it an equity item, but you gotta have the right-sized kitchen to support the population that you're gonna have, and so.
It's more function, you're functional, yeah.
Right, it's more of a functional equity, I guess. And then when we talk about the other equity items, it's stadiums, it's performing arts center, th- those were all, again, identified needs, and if you look at the educator input data versus what the advisory group came up with, it was all consistent. If you go back, uh, last year and previous efforts, all that data tracks is the same in terms of their needs, that's what the community, our educators are telling us what they need for, you know, educating their, our, our students. So, um, that's where that is. So I, I, the equity term in terms of the middle schools is not, um, you know, a want, it's really to get everything up to the same standards across the middle schools.
So.
Which is, which is a want, right?
Well.
I mean, we wouldn't have to do it to.
But looking at the, the slide with the priorities one through seven from last board meeting, the performing arts center is listed as a separate line item then, so, so if I'm understanding this correctly, then the one hundred and thirty million dollar addition project for middle schools does not include the performing arts center?
Correct.
Okay.
And all of those things underneath of it?
Right, yes.
There's, there is definitely a perception of middle schools, I feel like, in our community in terms of what's the, you know, shinier one versus not, and I think as much as we can do to create, even though, I mean, very similarly, my, I went, went through Century and my, my younger ones will go through Kenwood, I have no concerns about any sort of transition there, and I think as much as we can do to create a similar experience is gonna be good for that perception.
I attended some of those task force meetings over the summer, and I can tell you that that was a very, very stressed point among all participants, and they brought it up time and time again.
It's, it's, there's, I've had plenty of conversations, probably because my neighborhood switched, and just talking with people about, you know, awesome things at Kenwood, because people are really upset about moving, you know, so it's, it's, that's out there.
We should keep it in mind, because we're gonna, well, A board, we'll have that same discussion down the road when we get to high schools, you know?
Right.
North is behind south, and, yeah.
The other very large item on the priority list from last board meeting is the pre-K, building, right, it's up to build a new center, right? For like almost forty million? I could, I, I mean, I, I appreciate that, I think there is a need, but I'm wondering if that should be incorporated into like a long, long-term teaching and learning plan, rather than just like tack that onto this?
Sorry, I would agree with you.
There, there are some things on that list that are dependent on a vision and strategy, and there are some things on that list that are not dependent on a vision and strategy. And we also, you know, just, I can remember who said it, but we also got to be cognizant of, you know, are we representing with this ask, are we representing the greatest portion of the community when we go out, whether it's a one question or a two question? Are we giving the community to vote on what they need in, in their schools, right? And making sure that we represent the greatest cross-section of the community as possible when we go to, um, you know, a vote in May. And again, some of those things are dependent on a vision and strategy, and some of them are not, um, and that may help you in that decision.
I think, I think, I mean, I'd have to pull it up, but I did look a little bit ago at the, um, the, why is that a five hundred million dollar program coming up, and they had three different questions. You know, one thing I think has been a challenge recently in our community is if we go out for more than one question, it's hard to get both of them passed, or at least that was the last experience. And it's also harder to get past things that I would say are more special interests, and so when we think about some of our teaching and learning related items, when we talk about early childhood or special education or ALC, um, I think we have to be strategic about how we pair all of those things to get broader support. And so that's, that's, yeah, I come back to like, how do we?
You're a hundred percent right, because that's exactly what I was talking about last time, where, um, if you just go out for a levy for the district office.
It won't happen.
No, no, because we want things for kids, and that's just not, um, the need of the community right now, that's not what the community would like to see. So we do have to be strategic in how we do the questions and how we pair things, because, those other things aren't the shiny new stadium stairs.
Well, and that's why I, I guess, like, if we were to push this back to next November, that would be, when would we have to know? I know that pushes everything off, right?
You will not make, if you wait, you know?
We wouldn't make a twenty-eight opening. But we.
Yeah, that was my question that I asked earlier today, about like, can, does it have to be May?
Yes.
Even if we pushed it to July?
We, it has to be May if we're planning to open in twenty-eight. But I also think, like, is there something to be said for developing a more cohesive plan that includes the various departments? And it is gonna push back the year, but then it's a more comprehensive plan that addresses the multiple needs, and we only have to go out once versus going out this year and then in two years.
There's something to consider, too, in that the, the volume and, you know, typical voters who are gonna be voting in May are gonna be categorically different than what are gonna be doing in November.
Absolutely.
Everybody's gonna be doing it in November. You're gonna get a bunch of runner, yeah.
It's not as much as, so.
That actually might work favorably if we split this up, in the sense that we cover the middle school expansion in May, and then supplement it with one in November, focusing on other items that we would want to discuss and as part of a long-term plan. Because you're gonna get just largely different groups of people voting. You might wanna consider it, um, just as an alternative, rather than putting it all into one or putting it all together.
Have we done, like, you were saying this may end in November?
Well, I'm saying, um, in order to make the timeline for the additions, it sounds like that has to be done, if, if, you know, we're going to move forward with that. If there are other things that we're discussing, and a lot of these items, you know, the additional pre-K, early learning center, um, you know, stadium upgrades, um, also these other items, performance arts center, we can have more time to discuss the long-term vision of what we wanna do as a school district, and then start making movements towards that, um, refer into that for, as per that. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, I, I don't, have we done that, where we've done like twice in one year? It's, I, I would just say it's like, it might have to wait until.
I, I would offer that you wait one year, because you're gonna have to bond for the high school problem in twenty-seven-ish. So, to your point, sir, yes, you could do that, but I would, I would wait one year instead of trying to do two votes in, in a single year. Gives you a little bit more runway to, to get the vision and strategy right, be very deliberate, and then you can go and, and you can take that bigger bite, yeah.
I, I do agree that it's not a wise idea, but. What's gonna happen is people are gonna vote for the smaller one and say, okay, I did my contribution, let's move this through. That's what happened last time.
Unless you package it with really meaningful things, like, that's, that's where I think being strategic about what's in each question, what people are gonna latch on to in terms of pulling to vote for.
But it seems like our community has a harder time passing levies, right? All the, all the resource questions we need for the teaching and learning discussion, you can't pair that with a bond. You know, you can't say like, we need to pass this in order to build them, like, you couldn't make them dependent on each other, correct? These are separate, you can't put a bond with a levy, right? Is that magical, correct?
Well, yes, you can, but the, the, the operating has to be November, there's no choice to do it.
And you can make them dependent on each other? Oh, you could? No.
But we don't need an operating levy right now, right?
Well, I think there's.
Some of the, some of the needs would be more operating, that's.
We're saying we don't have what we need to do, we need to do.
Right. And I think when we're, when we are talking about the strategic plan and the various things that are a part of our mission, the facilities is a really important piece of that, but obviously an instructional piece is huge. We're not dealing with that right now.
I don't know if this is telling what you're getting at, I mean, there's also the reality that a bond would be more likely to pass in May than November.
Yeah.
Or whatever, I guess we can't do operating levy in May.
But I do think, like, people understand.
Not that I want to, I'm just saying. Good to know.
I do think people understand, like, the, the middle school capacity issue, like, people are talking about it.
Yeah.
So, I would be very surprised if that didn't pass no matter when, when we go for it. I, I said that out loud on here, but.
Yeah. Because what if you did the, you know, the essentials on the expansion? And then you, you added the equity as another contingent question on top of that?
You're talking about like a stadium or a four or five?
Mm-hmm, I'm talking about like the equity within the elementaries.
Well, it gets.
Because if people are saying that's high priority, and it's the second question, you know, contingent on the first one passing, which is the expansion, then theoretically it should pass too, right? If that truly is high priority, and more just a priority in the, the, the facilities group advisory group that we had.
I just, we start to split hairs now with, with the capacity versus the equity, because now you're saying, well, build classrooms but don't build a kitchen.
Well, no, no, I think that's, that's, that's a necessary component, I would agree, but there are other things.
Like what?
Like five million dollars of furniture upgrades.
Okay.
You know, I think that's a, a want and not a need. I mean, again, I haven't seen all the furniture, maybe there are some.
I, I would, I would offer.
There are, there might be some needs, but.
Nineteen sixty furniture is what we heard, right?
Just build the last.
Yeah, and Kenwood.
Can I, can I offer a good way of, because what you're seeing is in, in that broken-out pricing, it's just quite literally results of the plan that we have, right? You'll see, you see that, that metals room, right?
Yeah.
As an add, and that's actually associated with capacity addition, right? It's just part of how you expand the cafeteria, because right now it is surrounded and outsides by rooms, so you have to replace them with some. I think the way that you could look at and break out this pricing is through capa-, all of the work that's required for capacity add, all of the work that's required for equitable teaching stations, so, for example, McGuire has teaching stations or classrooms that are under seven hundred square feet, so very, very small for middle schools, that was one of the needs that was identified. You have DCD rooms or center-based rooms that are very small and don't have access to bathrooms, so that's another way that you could break out this pricing, and we can do that after this and provide that. Furniture certainly is another one. And then I would break out the, the tennis courts at KTMus, just because it's additional, curriculum opportunities, but not necessarily, I, I mean, that's the need that it's serving.
Are there middle school tennis teams? Yes, there are. And where does Kenwood?
Things, um, Kenwood could not host their own event because they didn't have enough tennis courts.
You need, you need eight tennis courts to hold them.
Do they host live tournaments at middle school? Do they host live tournaments at middle school at all?
Well, I don't know how you define live, but they, yes, they, but, all the tennis courts are used, like, all these facilities are used all the time, whether it's, you know, district sponsored, not district, I mean, they are one hundred percent almost all the time.
I understand that, but then, like, when I think about priority, like, as far as like teaching and learning goes, like, the tennis courts are not going to hit the same priority for me as the additions to middle school, because that fills a need for so many more students than the tennis courts. And then when I think about equity, I'm also thinking about, like, where our students are learning and the spaces that they're learning in. So, a DCD classroom that doesn't have a bathroom, that's definitely a need, in my opinion. A tennis court?
Yeah.
A big, a big new performing arts center? I, I guess that's just not part of my priority list, especially when I have, like, the ALC students that are in a locker room, learning without any windows, without any cafeteria access, without any gym access. The tennis courts are kind of, down here for me.
I, I'm kind of, not to joke, but I have a Brian Thompson question.
He's gonna be honored.
Only one.
And this is only because I, I came from Eden Prairie system, we have one middle school that's gigantic, right? So, we would never do additions on two and close one, to save cost on operations. And then we, we'd have a feeder system.
Be a big addition.
I know, I'm just, has that ever, has that ever like idea come up at all, ever? Like, where we would not need three, and then we could still use the third facility for like the space rentals?
So you're talking about two middle schools?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, I'm thinking, we're not gonna do anything, so we, you know, I'm thinking of all the options, just to.
It's not a bad thought, because when we think about equity with the three middle school buildings, McGuire is the oldest building, and it's landlocked, so it would be hard for us to build any more onto that specific building.
KTMus is problematic, that's why we did not put any capacity there, because although there's space, adding on is, just the geometry of the land is.
What's the issue there?
It's pretty landlocked there.
Yeah.
What do you mean by landlocked, just one way in, one way out type of deal, or?
Because it's surrounding the area, like the marshy area.
The marshy area, yeah, precisely, so where you'd want to add onto the building. I mean, it's a fair question.
Yeah.
Good job, Brian.
The only, the only other thing I just want people to think about is, I know when you guys were talking about capacity in these buildings, the numbers are high in terms of what is in classrooms, right? When you were like, so I only ask people to think about, like, when we're thinking about when we would potentially need another middle school, like, I would love to go for lowering class sizes, so overall across the system, but as part of a levy, um, and that would require more space, so.
And more tax base.
Yes.
But if, again, if we're talking about the feedback that we're getting from our elementary staff and our middle school staff and our high school staff, it's, it's how many kids are in their classroom.
So, I mean, and I guess that was my question earlier, is this too small?
Well, and that's why I asked about, are we really going to be able to, like, how long is this gonna last us?
So, like, if you look at some of the charts there, we kind of ran the numbers, option one versus option two, and just, if you look in the past decade, we read our, our occupancy rate was around eighty to eighty-four percent, you know, over the last decade, and so we built our capacity in one option to be right, initial occupancy to be right at eighty percent, because that's what, you know, our historical data says, and then we, you know, it was also talked about, well, let's build a little bit more space, so that's where option two is, gets you down to about like seventy-seven percent, to give you a little bit more space for growth. So that's where option two is, gets you down to about like 77% to give you a little bit more space for growth. And so, and then that just gives you extra insurance that you're not gonna have to bolt on or build another middle school with some unexpected growth. So to your point, the option two provides you a little bit more space.
I mean, there's really no reason not to go option two if you're gonna spend this much money anyways, right?
It's about a nine million dollar difference. Yes.
What's the tax, tax impact on average house again? Do you know that off the top of your head? Just at the middle school addition.
What we would do, like we're waiting for the survey to come back to really know what, what that threshold is. Because we can, we can frame this debt to match what's, what the, what the community's willing to pay.
I see. Okay. Got it. Yep.
I love that. And things have failed in response to, right? Like when we've tried to keep it within that, and then, I mean.
Where you follow the survey and then it just still?
And so in some ways, it's like, to me, it's, we, to do that, you have to go, we're gonna spend more over the term, right?
Yeah, if you, if it needs to come down.
Yeah, then we're gonna spend more across a longer period of time, where I think this is an easy sell to our community. Everybody knows that this is a stretch at this point.
I don't know if everybody knows that. Like, I think, I think as parents, we're in those circles, right? And I'm just cognizant of like the county tax, the levy that the county put on is like insane.
16%.
Combined.
Combined.
Yeah, combined.
The city added, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what Lakeville, cause I'm in Branchville, but like, but the county like right levy to 10% because they hadn't kept up with themselves. And we're, we have to keep that in mind. So I'm just.
Of course.
What we need in operating levy to fill some of these spaces is new spaces.
There will be some increased costs because we have more square footage, so we do have to have custodial support to do that. There will be heating costs, there will be electric costs, but it won't be enormous.
But as far as like staffing?
Staffing.
Teachers.
The, the kids will generate the money we need for the staffing.
Okay.
So not worry about the teaching staff. So it's whether we need more support staff in that particular building. That will be added cost.
But I mean, do you anticipate we'll be able to cover that in our budget or will we have to have a operating levy that we use up a chunk of that tax capacity?
We have to make decisions on our programming and what we can and can't do.
Yeah, I know one thing, looking back at Highview, and I still hear about this from people, that they're frustrated about, oh, you built a school and then you went out for, and again, I think some of it's education. They didn't understand, like you can't, you need to be operating levy separate from the capital levy to, to do it or the bond. But yeah, just wondering if, if we're anticipating that it'd be good to, I don't know, I don't know how you give people advance notice, but it doesn't sound like it'll be as much.
At the time, and correct me if I'm wrong, what happened with that was the unassigned fund balance was way up and the intention of the board at that time was to use that to open the school, which was why they didn't originally do an operating levy. Am I wrong? I thought that was.
You're right.
Yeah, I thought that was what happened. But then we had, you know, COVID and all the other things that impact our finances. So when you saw our unassigned fund balance tank, so that was no longer an option.
Is there any other information people need from Lucas to kind of advance this discussion?
Can we have kind of like an idea of where people are sitting? Like what they would like to see?
Sure, I'll offer. Low man on the total poll, so it's all good. I would like to see the option two, 100, 139 million, that's gotta be done. I would like to see a separate building for the pre-K early learning center and the ALC pathways. I know from the meetings of this summer, Phil was trying to find space for that was like trying to put a square peg into a round hole. Everyone was trying to figure out what to do with it, where to put it. If we have a solution for that, I think it opens up a lot of options everywhere else. Same, you know, having a, you know, separate building that would also include, you know, the leased space here, you know, things like that. Putting together a building of that nature. I mentioned at the last meeting that the area behind the church and over by Lakeville South is just a small, boring middle school, but it could work for something, you know, something much more, issue specific to something like according to that perhaps. The physical and safety and security improvements, yep, that's kind of a need. I guess those are my needs. Those are the things I would really like to see. Other options, I mean, I'm, I'm open to ideas, but I'd really like to see those things taking part of, as part of this endeavor. Everything else can kind of, you know, looking at the bigger picture and taking a step back. I think we really do need to have discussions as far as what we're going to be doing for the next 15, 20 years as far as like what we see as far as the school district, what buildings, and trying to map that out as part of a long range plan. I don't think it's, you know, been discussed to, to a large extent. It's, you know, superintendent Valman pointed out, a lot of the problems that we're seeing right now could have been predicted two or three years ago. I think having those discussions and working towards kind of a long-term comprehensive consensus would go a long way to finding the groundwork for the future.
Lucas, on the facilities slideshow with the seven things for the early childhood center that's on there, do you have a land place?
A land?
Like land purchase for that or like?
27 acres that we have.
Okay.
That's what we would use if that was.
That's where you'd put it? It was on the 27 acres?
Where would that be?
It's right across from Trinity.
Oh, where is it physically?
Oh, exactly. That's what you're thinking. Okay.
27 acres over there that we own. Used to have a codicil on it.
I thought it was gonna be additional on the existing building. Okay. I, I struggle with, with the click, an additional building. I mean, we got the numbers, enrollment numbers. I mean, we have the capacity right now to serve all of the, our district residents. I think if we prioritize our district residents, they all fit in the current building, you know?
Not, early childhood, special ed, you cannot do that, just so you know.
You mean you can't prioritize? But even still, I think, what was it? The, one of them were 140 over. We have 140 out of district people and I, I think in one of those, not special ed. Pull it up. That just seems like a lot of money.
I think I provided, maybe I did, I, I might be conflating, but I think I provided the board some information on early childhood and if, there's some, some dollars that we get that have, I can't get the word codicil out of my head, but have some requirements in terms of accepting students. And I think the question was predicated on open enrolled versus serving our internal community. So we do have, so early childhood, special ed is one category. There's supplemental financial support that we get. I don't know if.
School readiness.
School readiness. So there, there are some rules and I'll have to go back and pull that up and share that with everybody.
Small wonders preschool, is that part of that or no? Because there's 135 out of district residents in that program.
But like you're not even accessing BPK because we don't have any space to do it.
Yeah, I, I'm just, again, this goes to priorities, like we have obligations as a district. For these certain, certain groups that we're serving here are not even obligation, right? It's nice to have, don't get me wrong, and there are benefits to it. But if we're not able to satisfy our, satisfy our financial needs at elementary and secondary, and we're gonna spend $38 million in additional staffing, I'm guessing too, probably need some additional staffing for the second building.
That's not a real situation where I realize it would take a long time, but through tuition, you could pay for the building? Never.
No, we.
You can't do that.
If, if we build a building, we would bond the building and then you.
Right, but like.
The only reason that it pays for itself now is it's because we own the building. Yeah.
Which we paid for originally, but like, so you can never do a situation where like your tuition dollars is helping to fund a facility.
I think the rates you would have to charge would be prohibitive in competition with private sector.
Cause I asked about leasing space as another option, you know, could it pay for itself if it's leasing? And I think even under that scenario, it didn't.
Well, we have Tonys.
I mean, I think, for me, I think we, expansion on the middle schools or some variation of that. I think we can trim it, I would hope that we could trim it a little bit off the 139 based on what the board deems are the, the needs versus the wants. Yeah. And then other items, I'd be open for a second. I, I mean, a sec, second voting option, but I don't, I see a lot of these as just wants.
And I would go back to some of the comments I made earlier about the strategic aspect of operations, teaching and learning and policy six online. I'd like to get a little bit of understanding of that. That being said, I'm still leaning towards the extension of the three. And I, I also agree going back to, and the word equity is confusing me, I'm sorry.
Confuses me too.
Yeah, I know, but facility equity, like we need a bigger cafeteria, makes all the sense in the world to me. And then you, you, you drop down into the, the equities that are sort of candy, you know, like a candy store. And I know, not a candy store, I see Lucas. But, but my point is, I, I think, I'd like to get a better sense of prioritizing that. Because I think if there is money to be saved, it's in the, it's in the non-equity equity, non-facility equity equity.
I get what you're saying.
If you know what I'm saying. So that being said, that's kind of where my head is at the moment, but I'm still listening.
So my thought would be, I would be for the bigger expansions on all three middle schools. Not the, the more conservative one, but the bigger ones, just to provide that space. And then all of the things that are the needs with those expansions, the cafeteria, the classrooms, all of that. My second priority would be pathways because I feel like it, when we talk about equitable educational spaces, they're the only student population in the district that doesn't have one. And they gave up their building during budget cuts, which benefited the city and I, I think it's a great thing for the art center. But I also look that, that student population has taken the most cuts overall. And when I look at some of the data that we were looking at with credit recovery and graduation and some of those different things, I think a career and technical center that wouldn't just be for pathways, would be for both of our high schools, would be supported by the community. And I also look at that space knowing that with some of the youth service learning projects that the Chamber of Commerce does, and special ed students have participated in those. One of the things that we're lacking within Lakeville is a PACE lab, which provides that training for, for our population of students, which could be in the career and technical center, which would not be for just pathways, but all of those.
We don't have a proposal for that though at all, right?
I'm thinking out of the box. Like I thought we could be out of the box here, so.
Yeah, we just have to have a number on it though, is the thing, right? What's the building? Where are you gonna build it?
That would be my thought.
I think for me, I can get behind option two for the middle schools. I think after our discussion today, it seems like the line item spreadsheet that, I forget, Michael, Lucas provided for the middle schools, there are very few things that could really be eliminated. I, I, at the time had, I, I had the auditorium linked in with it all. So I think for me, that was the one thing where we really needed to look for another auditorium. And so I think for me, that's like the optional thing that might not need to happen for the middle schools at this point. But I think other, other line items, I mean, tennis courts, we have, it's like hardly, it's really a very small part of the budget, so. That's where I'm at.
I agree with the security stuff though. I feel like that needs to happen.
I'd like to learn more about that, like what exactly is included. I feel like our district has spent more money than, than any really on safety and security. And so I just wanna better understand like what more are we gonna be doing? And if you wanna go over that now, that's fine. However, if that's, I think, what the task force showed and maybe the survey will show is like, because of, because of the climate in which we live, that's an easy thing to pass. And so with that rally votes, and I don't really like the correlation between those two things together, cause I think that's like using fear to drive budgets, but enough, so. But if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
I know some of it had to do with cameras.
Well, I, I can provide you a more detailed list, but very broadly, it's, it's, it's over 10 years too. So a lot of this is like cycle replacements, some of it is, you know, closing, you know, some newly identified needs now that we're using the system. So again, it's just about making our safety and security robust over time. And then as things age, it's being able to have those funds to replace the things to be used now. So I can provide an additional level of detail for you to.
So it's mainly to support 3D responses, infrastructure?
In part, yes.
I still have a lot of thinking to do. I, I am worried we're gonna get out to the 33, 35 time range and we're gonna unneed another middle school. I think the economy could shift. I think there's a lot of Lakeville to grow. And in that timeframe, we're not gonna pass anything else.
Beyond the high schools then, yeah.
And so I would rather pause and bring our departments together and see if we can develop a more robust plan that doesn't cause us going out repeatedly. As I'm looking at the YZ01, it's, it is, it's a huge levy for $65 million for a new elementary, a new middle and high school expansion and upgrades. And so they're bustling all of that together. They're a different district. They don't have, they probably have a different tax tolerance than we do. And I just think our community is tired of getting levy after levy after levy. So I don't, I do agree that we need to go for what we need, but my worry is it's gonna be similar to the elementaries where we have the expansions and we have to come back and ask for others.
All right, so you have yours?
I think that's everybody. All right. We're back, we're back here again in a week and then another week after that, so. Any other questions for Lucas?
Do you think we'll be able to come to a consensus vote next week?
Next week? I would say no. But I mean, I would say the 16th is probably the.
Is the survey data coming next week?
Yeah, we should have that.
Okay, so we're just, I, I, the 23rd is like the red line in the sand and we need some time. So once you say this is the answer, that's gonna trigger a, a proposal development team to go write the thing that you approved.
Sure.
And then you'll, you know, you and the superintendent will need to sign that, but that takes a little bit of time. The 23rd is a hard date, right?
What, what more information would each board member need?
Yeah.
In order to, like, it seems like we're, I, I don't know what else we would need between now and the 23rd, like why we couldn't do this on the 16th?
Oh, no, no. I say we, we would do it by the 16th.
Or, or sorry, next week is what day?
Night.
The night.
The night.
Yeah.
We don't have the survey.
We'll have the survey data in it.
The survey data will be that night.
Yes, it will be that night.
I mean, we could put it on for a vote next week and if we're ready to vote.
We can always like say, no, we're not ready. We could.
Yeah.
But at least we could, if the survey data comes out and was like way different than what we think.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys have other questions of Lucas. Yeah, I mean, if you guys have other questions of Lucas, make sure you get it to him before next week.
I'm here for twenty-four seven.
Matt, will you be following up with Brian so that he has information from tonight's meeting?
All right.
Thank you, Lucas.
Did we just miss a bunch of stuff?
Yep, I already did.
Oh, okay. Everyone else staying. Uh, last item, we can make this quick.
I don't know what's happened, I'm out.
Thank you all.
You had missed that, he didn't say that yet, did you see that?
I mean, this isn't the actual about race, it's just a discussion of it.
I understand.
Okay.
They don't want us.
Yeah.
Watch, uh, paint.
No, I, I remember. Thank you, welcome.
All right. Seems like race, so few of us now. So this is a rubric that we're sending out to all board members?
Okay, well, I'll see what.
This was what we agreed to send out to all board members, we're good for that? I just pulled this out of the MSBA thing and removed the unnecessary pages.
One question I had about this, um, sorry, did I drop it in too quick?
No, check that.
I was wondering, Michael, if you'd be interested in doing like a self-evaluation.
Sure.
We do it and then we have a meeting to kind of compare where, and maybe we need another, a separate board conversation before that. But I'd be curious, like here, do you think things are going to?
Yeah, so we, so we do this, then we go into closed session. Do we go into closed session without superintendent first?
Yes.
And talk about it, what?
We're doing it right now.
No, 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 yes, go.
We do.
And then do we bring him in, talk to him, and then do we go out into open session and then have like a little synopsis of it?
We do a closed session without him just to, um, because like what, what we do is like we all fill it out separately and then they all go to you. And then you kind of craft like one voice, so it's not like seven different assessments of the superintendent. It's the board's assessment of the superintendent and then you, you bring that crafted version to the closed session and then kind of review it, make any tweaks that we need to. And then we, um, give him our final version and discuss it, yeah.
I, I'd like the conversation to be current and, and future evaluation. I think one of the things that, and I mentioned this, I don't know, I lose track of time, it was a month ago in one of the meetings, when we started talking about this thing. When Michael got his contract, which I think was in October ago, two Octobers ago, Carly?
Not this, last October.
The October before, right? I'm, I'm not sure there were, there were any requirements, and let me use a different word. There were, weren't any specific metrics, anything to accomplish that was very evident, I think, when, when you signed your contract. If I'm wrong, please tell me, I wasn't there.
He was interim.
He was an intern then?
He was interim, so you don't evaluate an interim superintendent.
All right, so.
But there was a transition plan.
There was a transition plan.
So that was something that, when I was looking up, trying to find things like, um, that's something that, um, Michael, you identified like goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote a transition plan.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, so there's some of that, okay, all right, so, but still, I think there's, there's this evaluation current day. But I think we also need to start talking about, because time will slip away. What the next evaluation should be and what Michael would be accountable for. And, and I think when you, when you look at the metrics and you look at the academics metrics that we've, um, we've put on the dashboard and some other things. I think that should be part of the next evaluation, a year from now or whatever it is.
End of the school year.
Yeah, end of the school year, thank you. So, so even though we're going to do this, I, I don't want to lose sight of the future one, because again, time's going to slip away. We're going to be sitting here with Michael and, and maybe not having what we need, or ma, letting him know what we expect of him. So that it's fair, so it's a fair evaluation and we're not blind sighted.
So Paul, to what you're saying, like I'm looking on, I guess it's page twenty. Like for the teaching and learning metrics, I feel like these align with the things that you're saying. But are you, you were saying, do you want a specific target number, like he has to hit sixty percent and if he doesn't?
Yes, I think, I think that's what we've been talking, yeah. See, Amber, yes, staff development, school improvement, curriculum instruction, professional, yada, 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 culture, et cetera. But I think one of the things we've been working on for months, and it came up actually last February, was what are the metrics that we want to see improve, which in essence is accountability? So that being said, what are we holding Michael accountable for and, and put that in metric form? Now, not every one of these is going to have a metric, I get that.
Well, but that's what you're supposed to do with goals, but we never wrote goals for him, we did like the dashboard.
Kim, my point, my, you're making my point.
Yeah, I, I'm supporting you, saying that like, this is like, this is just a basic job performance of what a superintendent would be. But the accountability metric comes in when you write him specific goals that you want him to accomplish for the year. That's how you hold him accountable, because like, this is just like for any superintendent, right, like.
But I think it's important that, this is a big list, but, but. These are all critical things that the superintendent's doing.
Correct.
And my fear is we only will focus on the teaching and learning, but.
Yes.
But the part about like, I forget the term, but basically like connecting with the community to create goodwill, that is huge. Like, you, the superintendent is here to pass levies and referendums. And if they, if that can't happen, then you can, for the rest of it, it's all, you know.
And Amber, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there aren't important things on here.
Yeah.
But if academics are failing, and I'm not saying they are, Michael, but if academics are failing, where, where are we as a board?
Yeah, I agree, and I think like.
I, I don't think we want to lose sight of that, that's, that's my point.
And I think the big question is like, what is the number? And if that number is not hit.
Then what do you do then?
Are we firing the executive cabinet? Are, you know?
Yeah.
And that.
Possibly.
We have to be ready for.
I mean, if that's, I mean.
Well, we only have, we only have one client, we only have one employee though, that, that's the difference, right? And I, so I went back and forth because I listened to the, um, meeting again and I was in alignment with Kim's write-up and her evaluation form because it was tied to what we've been discussing. But looking at this in preparation for tonight, there's a lot of value here too, because it does cover, I mean, there are some things that I'm just going to have to put N A, like I don't know, right? How certain things are going. But I do think we can use, you know, some of the goals that we've set for the district, which are really the superintendent goals and the metrics that we have even to date, you know, for purposes of val, evaluating him under this rubric too. And it's going to form different, different categories. I think the teaching and learning one is a good one because it does line up with some of the metrics that we put up, technology is in there, communication. So, I don't know, I guess we'll see how it goes this first round. So this is for us.
So what's the cadence? Because like we've talked about this once before. And then from that meeting, like we were, we were going to work with Kim to make this like a, like a fillable Google form so we could do it electronically and submit results to you. And then we were, but that was already supposed to have happened. So typically you do like two check-ins, so we should have already done one. And we should have one due in like another month, and then we should have the final one due in July. So given that that timeframe is not going to work, what's, what's our cadence for how we're going to do this?
I mean, I think I send this out next, in next week and people go through and fill it out and hopefully have it back mid-December.
I don't want to do another meeting in December.
No, 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 you have this back in mid-December.
Okay.
And then we can discuss it after the first of the year.
So we're going to do it on paper?
Yeah.
So are we doing this one?
Or digitally. Well, so here's the other question.
No, I think we're doing this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this is the one that the board wrote it on, so.
So the question, do we want to do one of this, we had also talked about doing one for the staff. Which I think, Kim, you said this is the one that was also sent out to the staff, the board and the staff did this one?
Well, that's just one I drafted based on our board conversations, but nobody wanted that one, they wanted this one. But we did like, how we did it is we did like three goals like that, similar to that format. And then we sent out a Google form with those same questions to the staff. So they filled out on those goals and we filled out on those goals and that's how we evaluated.
So they did get that?
They did the same one?
They did the same one we did, but that's one that I wrote for Bowman.
I think this is the one.
That's not the one.
Here, check that.
I don't know, they all look the same, do they?
They do look very similar.
That's not, I, I cross-checked that, Kim, with the other thing I sent you with the screenshots of the Google, like.
Yeah, yeah.
We completed a different one via Google form.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I think this is one I wrote after one of our board discussions for Bowman. I don't think this is the one we did with Doug.
Okay.
Not at all. It was similar in format because we had the same ratings. And then there were three goals and then we had written feedback for each goal that staff members could provide. And then the strengths and areas for growth. And then there was just a general comment section, but it was like on a Google form. We just, I just, I made it, like I just transferred the questions from this to a Google form and then Doug sent it out to staff.
Kim, also, is that what you were talking about when we were talking last week?
Yeah, well, no, I was talking about a survey monkey that was sent, not regarding, not with the board.
Okay.
Set up the panorama survey stuff or is that different?
Yeah, he had something, he had a different survey.
He sent out a panorama survey.
Yeah, he did that too.
Yeah, but Kim, I think the one, does this sound familiar, there were three different goals.
And then we added a fourth goal later.
To Dan's eyes?
Yes. We added it after our first check-in.
So those were more specific to things, yeah, so that's where that was, yeah, more tailored.
Yes, it was like over communication.
This feels, this feels very similar to like this, it's just written in a different style.
It's just summarized, so you don't have as many.
Yeah.
Like, and so what we did is we decided like what were the, because this is very long and thorough because it covered all the aspects of our superintendent's job role. But we took like what are the board's priorities and our priorities for the new superintendent were, um, we were trying to fix the unassigned fund balance, so there were still finance goals. We wanted, communication was a big one because we wanted them in, in the community, meeting people, getting to know that. Um, and then we had the budget cuts, so I mean, a lot of those were related to what was going on in the district at the time. And you know, then you think about like what do we have going on right now? Well, we're going to need a levy or a bond, so finance should be a big one. We're kind of re, reevaluating teaching and learning and we have new leadership, so there should be something related to teaching and learning. And then he is in, um, just if we're in a growing time within the district. So being out in the community and explaining like the district's story about that is important in his role because the community has to understand what the school is going through and have someone positively telling our stories that when we do go out for a levy, they understand what the needs are. Because I mean, this just takes a, it takes a long time to do it the right way, even with three questions. Because we, I mean, everybody provided comments, they need to go through all the comments and figure out like where the common themes are and, yeah, it takes a long time.
I bet you could put it into a chat G P T and I would summarize it for you.
Probably.
Well, I, I almost wonder if we don't just take some out of here for the staff as well, you know, that are not school board specific?
Well, and do we want to do that now or do we want to do that as like a final?
Yeah, this seems like a mandatory eval and like.
So just stick with the board for, for now? Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that and see how it goes, um, and then have more of a, kind of your wrap-up. And you can do the.
Michael, do you have any thoughts?
At that point?
Well, my only thought is I like this one just because, um, it has, seems to have more of a practical methodology to it and, but.
I took the board's discussion that we had, um, and I kind of took pieces from what everybody was saying and then I created three different areas based on the similarities from what people shared. And then just created metrics for that, like one, two, three and four. And I used the format of the MSBA one.
Which is this one?
Right, yeah, so I pulled some of the information.
I think this one might be different, but, but I'm aware of yours. And again, I was in support of that, but I think the majority of the board went, wanted to do this one, which I'm fine with too. I think they both get us, and this one's probably just has more, it's more expansive, it covers more areas, which might be interesting.
We could use, sorry.
I was going to say, this might help us this round to do that and then for the final, we could funnel it down to like things that.
We'll figure out what's, what we find of value when we go through and do this as a board and then. With this one, and then we could trim it up for the end of the year.
Do you have something that you sent this?
I was going to say, another option, do this one. But I would use this as my guide, like to think like, okay, here's all the things I should be thinking about as I'm completing this. And not giving a score for each one, but giving, and I think my only change would be on goal three of this, where it says align with district academic goals. I think it should be aligned with all goals.
It should just say strategic plan.
Align, yeah, we're aligned with the strategic plan.
Yeah.
It's pretty broad though, isn't it?
Or goals, I mean.
No, no, I'm just saying generally, yeah.
We have goals beyond academic, and I think I don't want to lose sight of those other goals.
Yeah.
Because the first area is all about technicals, so.
We just can't send the big one to staff because that's a big ask.
We've gone around the circle now, are we?
So wait, Amber, you want a?
I don't really care, I think.
You sold me on this one, Amber, and now you, now you jump shift and left me.
I know, I'm sorry. I listen to Michael.
I want Michael too, I would rather fill out the short one.
I'm sorry, Michael, I, go ahead.
No, you.
Michael, did you suggest this one after I left?
I, well, Carly just asked me, so I, I mean, I look at the two and this one seems to have more kind of like.
A link.
You can fill it out and it seems more practical and it's distilled from this. But, and, and I'm not, I understand that it might not be exactly these written out goals, but it seems like if this was going to go to staff to be able to fill in as well and there's a Google form for it. I guess I'm looking at it from a more practical basis to get information, to collect it, to.
If we're going to go that one, I would say we'd go back to the one that Kim actually drafted because it was aligned more with our discussions.
Yeah.
Where is this one?
Yeah, I don't know where this one is actually from, so.
You shared it with me, yeah.
Kim drafted?
You shared it?
I don't think that's one Kim drafted.
I sent him over email, I just know that I sent it over email.
Kim must have changed it at some point, because the one that I shared with you was from Kim.
Hold on a second.
I think I drafted a couple different ones just based on discussion, so just pick the one you like the most, they all only had three goals.
Kim, why don't you send out to us the one that you think you're that you guys are in agreement with the best one?
Okay, I, I can do that, my computer's dead right now.
Well, you don't have to re-nock.
Okay.
So for instance.
So if you look at the battery life, I had it fully charged at the beginning of the meeting, so that's where my battery life is for this.
Is that one we gave you?
Yeah.
Oh, no, frisbee.
It's all right, it's okay.
Do we need to change it?
It's okay, it's all right, because up there I always have to just plug in the things.
Maybe it is the same one, mine just needs to be formatted better. Mine just needs to be formatted better.
And when I say staff, like, we sent it to the executive cabinet.
Yeah.
Like, I didn't send it like to everybody.
To all the chairs?
No. No. Just the people you work with directly.
Tony, you'll have fun, right?
Well, I actually enjoyed the discussion, guys, what you guys were talking about and how, I mean, it's... I'm learning what you guys kind of value as far as like how you guys are discussing this, like, you know, whether you want it more detailed, whether you want it more practical, or whether you want, how you guys work together. So, I'm, you know, even if, even if I'm observing here, it's just, you know, I'm taking it in.
You're part of, you're part of us now, dude.
I am, I am. And, and, you know, when it comes to this, I mean, I don't know how much my like take on what he's done. I'm two weeks, I mean, it's not really a whole lot, but, um, if you want my personal opinion, I think the simple one is the one that would offer the most opportunity.
Well, the other thing I could maybe send, if you're, if it's helpful, you know, I've been tracking goals based on the conversations and if you go in my office, you'll see them written up on the board. If that's helpful to include or just share with all of you and if you want to, you know, include that in there, you know, I'll help out any way I can.
And Michael, I think your board would be really good for maybe this one, but certainly in the future, because that's part of what we're going to be looking at to, to see if they've been accomplished. Michael, in your first life year, how did they evaluate you?
I got no evaluations in the five years.
You got no evaluations, never?
I gave...
And you get a merit increase?
I, I didn't.
You didn't get a merit increase?
The, what I did is a portfolio online.
Yeah.
And I send it to the board at the end of every year.
Right.
I'll take that back. My first year, I did get an evaluation from the board.
All right.
Subsequent years, I asked and I put an online portfolio that they all could access and I just put what the goals were that I distilled and what the artifacts were to support the accomplishment of those goals. And, I mean, I'm just candidly telling you how it went.
All right.
Let's try it.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
I think we're, I think we're in agreement, consensus?
Okay.
Tony, you did?
I'm good.
Sorry, do we want to have it go out to the cabinet or no? Okay.
Amber, is that fair?
What?
I'm, I'm trying to think of fairness to Michael.
We didn't send it out to cabinet until the end. Like, it was just ours.
Yeah, we could do it, and if you're like this, it's just a check-in.
We didn't do it every time. If you want to do it every time, you can, but for the check-ins, we didn't. It was just the final one we did to cabinet. 'Cause we took their opinion into the, the final, yeah.
That sounds good to me. Then that's probably a more efficient process.
Okay. So, again, procedurally, we would come back, once it's all collected, synthesized, it's closed session for the board to chat about it.
Yep.
And then we bring Michael into the closed session?
Yes, yes.
We chat about it, then we have to go back into open session and then explain...
You just have to do it at the next board meeting. So, you don't have to do the summary right after.
Yeah.
You can do it at the next one.
So, not in detail, but, yeah.
Because you want to be cognizant of employee rights.
Yeah.
Not that there's gonna be anything that you worry about.
It's your evaluation. I can always...
No, it's, it's your evaluation.
Yeah.
All right. Any other? I would second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned.
All right, out to the free frozen tundra.